The Placer County Planning Commission Thursday, July 9th. Could we stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Good morning. Mr. Cannon.
President, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Hersog. Ms... Mr. Sevison.
I do too. Larry, you're on mute, so you may want to unmute yourself.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Haugie.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and social distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered through a completely remote call-in process. Citizens who wish to comment today that did not call the reservation line prior to the start of the meeting should be prepared to use our call-in line app by 530-886-1800. Please call in at the time that I open the public comment period for that specific item that you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included in the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. Your call will be queued through our county operator and transferred into the Planning Commission chambers to be heard in the order in which calls are received. If you receive a busy signal, please write back on the same number to be connected for comment. Please be aware that there is a 30-second delay, and sometimes it's closer to a minute, between our meeting proceedings in the chambers and your view at home. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes to comment, so please hold the times will be... Hold times may be longer if there are many callers. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and to assure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. May I also say, anyone calling in, please turn off any computers watching this online because of the delay. It's really important to mute that and talk directly to us on the phone. So at this time, we would like the Planning Director's report, and I think Steve is going to give it. EJ's on vacation.
There we go. Took me three tries to get the button to work. Steve Dredy, I'm the Cedar Director, poor substitute for EJ Valdi, the Planning Director who is on a well-deserved vacation this week. I'll be short and sweet, just a few updates. The winery brewery ordinance that you had recommended was unanimously passed by our Board on June 23rd. Also, last Tuesday, a 90-day extension of the urgency ordinance for outdoor retail restaurants and signs. An extension was granted for another 90 days. That'll take it into October. Certainly, that would be long enough in Tahoe area and most likely down here. Planning Commission schedule, the next hearing on July 23rd is going to be canceled. We do have another one scheduled for August 13th, although we're not certain exactly what items are going to be heard at this point, but we do have that coming up. And then, just a general update, our public counters have been... We've only been open Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We look to go next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., so they're limited hours, and they're by appointment only, so that we don't have people queuing up in the lobby. The reason we're keeping the Thursdays closed is because we're working... We have accessory dwelling units. Under the new state law, we have 60 days to turn these around. We have been inundated with these. We've normally had about 15 or 16 a year. The last couple of years, we've had 30 to 40, as some of the rules relaxing with all the new relaxed rules were... I think we're processing about 57 last time I heard, so that were in process and a number have already been approved. We're shooting for 75 by year-end. Good news for affordable housing, because these are... They really are affordable housing, and so that's good. Part of the problem with going online, and I can tell you, we've had, obviously, a big surge of online permits, both planning and building and engineering. The problem, we opened it up so that all members of the public can submit their permits rather than have a licensed contractor. Taken a lot more TLC with the customers, a lot more back and forth. In fact, we were... We had determined we had about 1,000 touches. 1,043 was the average touches per day of our eight front-counter people. So for eight people to have that... And that would be back and forth with emails, phone calls, or a variety of things. So we're doing our best to keep up. We had fallen a little bit behind. That's why we kept it the three days a week for a while. With all the ADUs and the requirement to get them done in 60 days, that's why we're keeping the Thursdays. We will have some appointments on those days. So we're doing our best to keep up. We're still going to be three days a week in Tahoe. They're still catching up there as well. And then, we will open up full-time as soon as we can. So just a heads up on that. That's where we're at on that. We've closed out fiscal year on June 30th. Ended up just short of $4 million of revenue in our building permit program, which is the best year we've had in about 12 years. We were on track for about $4.5 million before COVID hit, so it was a little disappointing towards the end. While we've had the big uptake in the online permits, total permits slightly down during this timeframe, they've gone down a little bit, although they're coming back pretty well. We ended up with just short of 6,000 permits. We're on track for about 6,300, which is kind of in par with what we've been doing. Single-family homes, though, we only ended up with 290 over the fiscal year. And in past years, we've been between 339 and 426 since 2012, so this is the least we've had since 2012. And so, some of the bigger things, we did see... You know, we were really expecting more homes to get going this year, some of the bigger projects, a number of which have slowed down because of COVID, but it looks like they're getting ready to go. And from all indications, home sales are really going pretty well. There aren't a lot out there. Personally, we just sold a home in Granite Bay that closed on Monday, so I can tell you, they're going okay right now if you get out there. So with that, unless you have any questions?
Questions?
Yes?
Well, see, did the winery ordinance, did it make it through without a challenge with the courts?
I'm sorry, the winery?
Yeah.
I'm not aware that we've been challenged at this point.
Okay, so they... Probably too late for them if they haven't.
It's June 23rd. I think there's 30 days.
Oh.
Yes, so there's still time.
Okay, and we did a couple rafting permits?
Mm-hmm.
And one of them had some challenging with it. Was that appealed or not?
Yes, it has not gone to the Board yet, but it was appealed.
Okay, just one of them?
One of them, yes.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's it for me. Thank you.
Sure.
Steve, I'm curious. Thanks for that report. That was interesting information, especially the challenges we're facing right now. ADUs in Tahoe versus down here, what are you seeing? Are you seeing a lot up there?
Not as many yet. I mean, the TRPA has different rules. We're working with them within the base, and I think they want to ease up the rules a little bit, but we have... I don't believe... I can't say for sure, but I don't believe that we've had as many, as big an increase up there. I'll have to check with staff. I can check with staff, actually. Get back beyond that.
That's all right. I'm just curious, is outside of the base, and are you starting to see more activity in that?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. I think some of the developers may start looking at this as more of an option for them with new development, too, to put in some of those.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. I will now open the public comment period for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda. Again, call 530-886-1800. And my understanding is there are some issues with the phone line, so please be patient. You're waiting. So we're waiting to hear if there are any callers. What's that? Give another 30 seconds. There are no callers yet that we have, but we'll give another 30 seconds due to the phone line issues. When you're waiting, 30 seconds takes a while. Any callers, Sue? That was... All right. With no other callers, the public comment period for matters not on the agenda is now closed. We will now move on to the consent agenda, and would any commissioners like to remove any items from the consent agenda? And does anyone from the public want to remove any items from the consent agenda? Again, call 530-886-1800, and we will wait. I think as the Chair, I was advised that the minutes from the last meeting, we had a couple of commissioners who were not present, so we will pull that item from the agenda and vote on the minutes separately.
Separately.
Yeah. So I think that leaves then one consent item on the agenda.
Actually, we'll vote on both.
Yeah, so... Okay, so we'll vote on the consent item separately.
Unless somebody wants to pull.
And that would be the action agenda for May 28th and Pond Pavilion Lofts' extension of time. Okay.
All right. I think that's a better move, to take a break, get it cleaned up.
So we have determined that one of the lines is having a problem, and we are going to have to reset that line up, so the Commission will take a five-minute break while we allow that to happen.
Turn it on.
Test one, two. One, two, one, two.
Is that working?
Testing.
Oh, okay. What's wrong with the phones? Okay.
Okay, we've got it working.
Okay.
Are we back on? Oh, yeah. Where did Jack go?
He stepped behind you.
All right. Bringing the Planning Commission meeting back in session. The phone line is corrected. Again, that number is 530-886-1800. And because it was broken, we're going to go back and ask if there are... We're going to open up the section on the public comment for any matters not on the Commission agenda, and we will wait for persons to call in. Any calls? Okay. No calls? Okay. With no other callers, the public comment for matters not on the agenda is closed. We'll again move back to the consent agenda. We're going to take separate actions on the two items, but is there anyone who would like to pull an item off the agenda for the discussion in the Commission? And... Okay. Again, if you want to, call 530-886-1800. Any calls coming in? Okay. No calls are coming in, so I think at this point in time, would accept the motion for Item A, the action agenda of May 28th.
I move that we approve Item A on our consent agenda.
Second. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Johnson, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
You can't vote.
I'm sorry.
You can't vote.
He's going to abstain.
You're muted. You're still muted. We can see you talking, but you're muted.
You're going to have to read his lips.
Yeah, he said abstain.
He said abstain?
He did.
All right.
We should try and get his audio working.
Yeah.
Can you try to unmute Sam? County Council says we have to hear you, Sam.
Yes, abstain.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Abstain.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, the second item is to B, which is approve the Pond Pavilion Lofts' extension.
I would move that we approve Item B on our consent agenda.
Second. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Johnson, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Cannon, yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving into the timed items. The first item is the Wilson Minor Land Division, the third-party appeal of the parcel review committee chairman's approval of minor land division. Members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Delaney is going to be presenting this item. Okay? So we'll wait until the applicant is brought in.
Good morning. Is this Miss...
Wilson?
I actually need the appellant, I think.
Good morning. Is this Miss Wilson?
Yes, it is.
Okay, please turn your audio off behind you so we can have you clearly attend the meeting here.
Yeah, I just turned it off.
Okay, thank you. Delaney's going to give her a presentation.
And before we do that, since this is an appeal, we would also need the appellant...
The appellant also.
So as long as they're here.
Hey, Mr. Lyon, here.
Mr. Lyon, we can't hear you. Check to see if you're on mute. Yeah, it's still on mute.
Yes, it is. Can you hear me? I can hear you.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
We're waiting for Mr. Lyon.
We're trying to get the appellant into the meeting as well.
Okay, perfect.
Is somebody calling Mr. Lyon to see if we can...
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, somebody's reaching out to Mr. Lyon to bring him online. We apologize to everyone waiting, but technology will get there.
Well, just stand there.
All right. Miss Wilson, it would be helpful if you could turn your phone on mute until it's your turn to speak.
Oh, okay. I'll do that right now.
Thank you. Good morning. You're live in the hearing room.
This is Mr. Lyon, yes. I can see everybody, but I can't unmute my iPad.
All right.
All right, you're live in the hearing room, so please turn your phone on mute until it's your turn to speak, please.
Okay.
All right. With that, Delaney, you can give the presentation.
Great. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Delaney Farnham with Planning Services Division. Today, we have a third-party appeal of the Wilson Minor Land Division. The project is located in Granite Bay, approximately 1.2 miles southeast of the intersection of Auburn-Folsom Road and Twin Rocks Road, and approximately 0.3 miles south of the intersection of Twin Rocks Road and Vogel Valley Road. The 3.31-acre project site is currently undeveloped and zoned R-S-A-G-B-40-P-D-of-1, which is residential, single-family, combining agriculture, combining minimum build site of 40,000 square feet, combining planned residential development of one dwelling unit per acre. The site is located just west of the Folsom Lake Recreation Area. The topography of the site is moderate with gentle downward slopes from east to west. There are two major vegetative communities, a mixed oak conifer woodland and annual grassland. The surrounding land uses are residential, equestrian, and lake recreation. One site directly north is an undeveloped site, while all other adjacent parcels are developed with single-family residences. So a three-acre site just north is undeveloped, and everything else around has residential single-family uses. The applicant is requesting approval of a minor land division to subdivide a 3.31-acre parcel into three parcels consisting of a 1.15-acre parcel, 1.07 acres, and a 1.07-acre parcel. The proposed access to all three parcels would be from Vogel Valley Road, a privately maintained road, which is accessed from the county-maintained Twin Rocks Road. On-site improvements include extending Vogel Valley Road along the eastern property line and a driveway along the southern property line that will provide access to all three parcels and end in a hammerhead turnaround here. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. During that public review period for the M&amp;D, 22 comment letters were received. Staff provided responses to those comments in the staff report. The existing access encroachment to Vogel Valley Road would be improved to a Placer County Plate 116 major with an eight-foot offset, a 25-foot radius, and 50-foot-long acceleration and deceleration tapers. 300 feet of the existing private Vogel Valley Road would be improved to a 20-foot-wide paved width. 100 feet of improvement would occur near this encroachment, so from Twin Rocks Road just to about the first driveway on the street, and 200 feet of improvement... And 200 feet of improvements would occur closer to the project site just as you approach farther down Vogel Valley Road. The proposed project would connect to Placer County Sewer Maintenance District 2 and connect to the San Juan Water District for treated water service. A six-inch sewer line will be brought in from the south of the project site and run along the southern driveway and then be stubbed out along the eastern onsite road. So the sewer is identified here in the red dotted line, so you'll see it coming from Warren Court, coming across the southern boundary of the proposed driveway, and then they'll run sewer up the eastern property line and stub it out at the top. South of the project site is a 50-foot-wide easement. That easement is for utilities and emergency vehicle access from Warren Court to the southern edge of the property site. So the EVA is this 50-foot wide that's identified here, runs from Warren Court, and then ends right there at the southern end of the property. The request for the minor land division was originally heard by the Parcel Review Committee on April 16, 2020. Neighbors provided verbal testimony in opposition to the project. Public comments focused on increase in traffic, road safety issues, flooding and drainage issues, off-site improvement location, and onsite driveway placement. The Parcel Review Chairman continued that item to the May 21, 2020 hearing. He directed staff to further analyze the placement of both off-site and onsite road improvements. At the May 21 Parcel Review Committee hearing, two public comments were made with concerns about road improvements, off-site flooding, and changes to the neighborhood. It was determined that the proposed off-site and onsite road improvements would mitigate for the potential issues raised during public comment, and the Parcel Review Chairman ultimately took action to approve the Wilson Minor Land Division as designed. A third-party appeal was filed on May 29 by Dana and Carol Lyon. The appeal letter contests the following. The appellants assert that the project is not compliant with SEQA due to an invalid Phase 1 ESA report and due to onsite driveway impacts. Additionally, the appeal letter suggests that the design of the minor land division is inconsistent with the surrounding area. The appellants question the intent of the onsite driveway location. The appellant raised questions regarding the validity of the Phase 1 Environmental Site Assessment Report. The appellant questioned that the report was valid because it did not describe an existing onsite well and above-ground tanks. A Phase 1 ESA is completed to research the current and historical land uses of a property. The intent of the report is to assess if current or historical uses have impacted the soil or groundwater beneath a property and could pose a threat to environment or human health. Environmental Health reviewed the Phase 1 ESA and found it satisfactory for the environmental review. The existing onsite well had already been identified and conditioned to be properly destroyed. So some of the items that were brought up, we have a picture here. These were taken by the appellant. This is a picture of a galvanized water reservoir, so no hazardous impacts are identified. We also have an existing concrete water system, which is part of that onsite well which will be destroyed with the project, and existing windmill that's on the site. So these items do not pose any hazardous impacts to soil, water, or human health. So the appellants suggest that placing the driveway on the northern property line would better coincide with the neighborhood. And they also suggest that the property along the southern boundary would pose flooding and excess water runoff. With the proposed onsite driveway, an estimated 33,000 square feet of impervious surfaces or 23% of the site would be constructed. The project is conditioned to have surface drainage and runoff not exceed existing conditions. This will be demonstrated during the improvement plan process, at which time the applicant will be required to submit a limited drainage report. Relocating the driveway to the northern property line would result in the same estimated 33,000 square feet of impervious surfaces. The surface drainage and runoff will still have to demonstrate no increase beyond existing conditions. The driveway is also designed to have a swell collect and then disperse water onsite. Therefore, the driveway location either along the northern property line or southern property line would have to adhere to the same conditions of approval and mitigation measures to reduce any potential environmental impacts. The appeal letter discusses concerns with off-site trees within 50 feet of the proposed driveway. If the driveway were to be relocated to the north, the amount of tree impacts would relatively remain the same. And it would also be required to adhere to the same mitigation measures and conditions of approval, which requires the mitigation for the loss of, loss and impact of 3.3 acres of oak woodland for the entire project site. So this kind of demonstrates the southern driveway here. The orange is showing oak canopy that's potentially impacted by the driveway. At the top, we propose the driveway to the north. The yellow is showing proposed oak canopy impacts. So irregardless of the location, we're gonna see some impacts to trees. So we've addressed that by saying the entire site needs to be mitigated for because at build-out, we anticipate when the homes are built, that overall site's gonna have a pretty big impact to existing oak woodland.
On this slide, real quick question. Because of the EVA, is the road along the eastern boundary going to be built no matter what?
Correct. So the eastern property line has the onsite roadway. That roadway is for the connection to the EVA as well as for sewer. So the sewer is being brought up, that eastern property line. So we also need a road there for sewer to be able to access. So yeah, regardless of driveway location, the eastern onsite road is required.
Let me see, just wanted to... Is there any road in that location now, or is it not existing?
No, and I do have a photo coming up, so I'll kind of identify where that eastern property, eastern onsite road is currently. It's sort of just dirt for now, so the site's completely undeveloped.
Okay, and so they would actually be building half of the road with this project?
Correct. Yeah, so the onsite road to the east here would be constructed, and then a driveway would also be constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So some of the tree removal along the backyards of the Hidden Creek Estate subdivision may be removed, which would limit some of the existing natural screening and natural buffer between the project site. However, many of the trees identified to be impact will still remain. In addition, a six-foot-tall solid-board privacy fence will be constructed from the eastern property line of parcel 3 to the western property line of parcel 1. So along that whole driveway location, they are required to build a privacy fence from that southern property line. So the applicants suggest that placing the driveway on the northern property line would better coincide with existing surrounding residential subdivisions, but also provide a potential future driveway access to the undeveloped property to the north. The Hidden Creek Estate subdivision is located directly south of the project site and was developed under a planned residential development ordinance. Whereas, properties north of the project site have been subdivided over time consistent with the underlying base zoning, resulting in lot patterns that are not necessarily uniform like you would otherwise see in a planned residential development. The property immediately to the north has potential to be subdivided into three parcels. However, the site is currently undeveloped, and it's unknown as to whether the property will be developed in the future and what site constraints exist that would dictate any future access. Additionally, several properties along Vogel Valley Road have backyards that back up to roads. This pattern of development is not uncommon in areas that have been built out over time with a mix of planned residential developments, lot-and-block subdivisions, and minor land divisions. The appellants assert that the design of the driveway along the southern property line will inflict the most amount of damage to the neighborhood and their backyard. And they believe with the intent for the property owner to get access from the EVA easement that connects to Warren Court. Warren Court is a road within the Hidden Creek Estate subdivision and does not provide legal access to this property. The EVA easement is for purposes for fire road emergency access and utilities. The project is conditioned to have a gate on the southern end of the EVA. The gate will remain closed and no public access or pedestrian or vehicle access would be allowed. There is no existing road connection between Vogel Valley Road and Warren Court. The appellants also requested a construction bond for the installation of the sewer line. This request was considered with our engineering and surveying department. And they've confirmed that it's county's practice to not take security on parcel maps. However, it's worth noting, no building permits will be allowed until that sewer and all other required improvements are completed to the satisfaction of the county and that the sewer construction is required to be done by a bonded plumber. Just to show you some of the pictures, this is that eastern onsite road, so existing, it's dirt and grass. This would be the EVA easement. It's already kind of fenced, as you can see. They are gonna be required to put a locked gate. And then this would be where the proposed driveway would begin. And then you can see, this is a property facing south. So you can see sort of the backyards of the neighbors in the Hidden Creek subdivision. So there will be some vegetation that remains. There will be a privacy fence that's constructed as well. So we think that the buffer will still kind of keep privacy there.
Delaney, hi. I have a question about that. Can I ask, is it okay, Mr. Chairman? If the driveway is moved to the north, does the fence requirement change? Would that privacy fence no longer be required to be put in?
That's a good question. The fencing kind of came up as a way to kind of preserve some of the aesthetics and to not have headlights kind of going into backyards. At this point, the northern property is undeveloped. There may be a condition that would, you know, phase that fence if at some time that northern property gets developed. But really, the condition for that fence was for kind of the neighborhood.
So it goes along with the driveway?
It does, yeah.
And then, because it's not required that they completely fence the property?
No.
Okay, that's just clarification. Thank you.
You got it. So yeah, the pictures here are just kind of giving you an idea of what the existing conditions look like and what the properties south of the project site, what their view of the property would look like as well. I'd just like to comment that no public comments were received during this appeal period. There was a request to add a condition, which was made by Environmental Health. I have included the condition in an errata. It will act as Condition 31A. This is a standard condition that gets incorporated during improvement plan process, and it was inadvertently left out from the original set of conditions. So if there's questions about that, I can answer that. So moving forward, the Parcel Review Committee recommends that the Planning Commission deny the third-party appeal, uphold the Parcel Review Committee Chairman's approval of the Wilson Minor Land Division, supported by the findings and conditions of approval stated in the staff report, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you. Delaney, you did mention there was an errata to the staff report?
Yes.
Just for the purposes of people that are attending this virtually, could you read that into the record?
Yes. I didn't memorize it. Okay, so the condition in the errata that's being added by Environmental Health is if at any time during the course of executing the proposed project, evidence of soil and/or groundwater contamination with hazardous material is encountered, the applicant shall immediately stop the project and contact Environmental Health Services Hazardous Materials Section. The project shall remain stopped until there's resolution of the contamination problem to the satisfaction of Environmental Health Services and to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. The discharge of fuels, oils, or other petroleum products, chemicals, detergents, cleaners, or similar chemicals to the surface of the ground or to drainage ways or on adjacent to the site is prohibited. A note to this effect shall be added to the improvement plans where applicable.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Let me see, I guess go back to one of the maps. That shows where the roads are gonna be built, that kind of stuff. Okay, I think it shows it there. I was just wondering, the EVA access road, it's also the driveway access road. Is that gonna extend all the way up through, adjacent to the undeveloped parcel?
No, so the, my point here, the EVA starts at Warren Court. It ends right at the southern property line. This is where the gated locked gate will start. And then this easement, it's, it connects to that EVA, but it's really an onsite road. So it will provide, you know, I guess I'm saying the neighborhood, the areas north of the project site will have that benefit of the EVA, so that fire could potentially access and go up that road to, you know, serve the community.
Yeah, so I guess it does extend all the way adjacent to the undeveloped parcel to the north, too?
Right, so the, yeah, so this road, onsite road, 200 feet. So we have onsite road being developed, and then beyond that, we have 200 feet of Vogel Valley being improved as well.
And that's just gonna be like a half of a road? It's gonna be a half of a road, not a full?
I believe it's a 20-foot paved.
20-foot paved road?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, the appellant, if you have comments, Mr. Lyon?
Can I back on?
You, we can hear you fine.
Okay. Yes, I guess the only comment that I have, as I said in the letter, you know, all I'm trying to do is get the road moved up to the north. I don't want to impose any extra cost. I think Ms. Farnham showed that it really doesn't matter whether it's on the north or the south. I think Ms. Wilson originally thought that the sewer had to be placed to the south, but since the sewer line runs the full length, it really wouldn't make any difference. As far as trees go, you know, they do talk about the canopy, but I think in my letter that I said of tag trees, the only tag tree on the north is a pine tree, and there's a big 25-inch oak tree, number 71, which would be taken out. And it's, you know, it's a beautiful old oak tree. I know she talked about the roads being different up on top, but I know Ms. Wilson would, you know, when she talked before, she'd rather be associated with our subdivision than the other subdivisions. So if she was associated with our subdivisions, pretty much we're, you know, backyard to backyard and front to front. So I guess at that point, much more questions for me.
Does the Commission have any questions? All right. If not, let's open this to the applicant and your comments. And that'd be Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, please take your phone off mute.
Ms. Wilson, you need to take your phone off mute.
Off the line.
Uh-oh. We will wait for Ms. Wilson to call back. You can open a comment. We really should wait for the applicant to be able to talk before. She was on the line.
Are you guys still there?
Yeah, we're still here. We're waiting for Ms. Wilson to call back.
The other thing, just a comment, you know, the Phase 1 validity, the only thing I was questioning on that was the onsite report, when the gentleman did the onsite, he didn't notice. If you look at that, I think it's 6.2.1. He said there is no well, there are no above-ground. So that's why I was questioning if anybody really went out and looked at it. You know, typically, if somebody goes and looks something and writes a report, you know, they kind of tell the truth. And that was why I was questioning the validity of the report.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wilson, it's your time to make comments.
Let me bring her back in. Sorry.
Ms. Wilson, you're live in the hearing room again?
Okay.
It's your opportunity to make comments on the presentation and about your thoughts.
I believe Delaney covered everything extremely well, and her presentation was clear. I don't have any other comments. I think Delaney covered everything.
All right. Commission, do you have any questions of the applicant? If not, it's time for public comment. Again, 530-886-1800. What's that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. There is, it appears there is a person calling in.
You're live in the hearing room for public comment. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Luran Lee.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I have two comments. I'll try to make them quick. We talked about the oak trees, the blue oaks and the pines. I have been ordered by my family to cite any removal of any trees in our back area. All our property are off, and I know there's mitigation laws and regulations, but I think my family thinks that the trees have a right also. The other point is, that I haven't heard, is the uphill sewer line that's going to go in our backyard. Uphill sewer lines, electric pumps or whatever they're going to use are subject to electricity. What happens in the power outage? I haven't heard any, where are the thoughts on that, that danger? And of course, the flooding, it's going to be a problem. Those are my comments, and I thank you very much.
Nurse, you have a question?
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a question here from the commissioner?
From Mr. Lee.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Lee, I was wondering, your property, are you on the north side or the south side of this particular?
I'm next door to the lions.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Are there other calls coming in?
Yes.
Okay, we have more calls.
Sue, could I say something?
No, we'll give you an opportunity to speak after the public comment. All right. You have another? Okay, thank you.
Good morning. You're live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, is this from Mike Garabedian?
Yes, Mr. Garabedian, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm calling for Placer County tomorrow. We have not, I have not viewed this site on the ground, so the comments in support of the appeal I'm making is limited to possibly being withdrawn based on finding further information. The issue is, this appears to be in the state responsibility area. I haven't looked at the mitigated neg declaration, if that's what it is, to see what the fire hazard severity zone is. That's important to know. I don't know about evacuation issues. I don't know if CAL FIRE or if the fire district in the area has reviewed this for fire prevention needs. I don't know if there is a fire-dapid community there or other thing addressing fire prevention concerns. So without seeing that in the staff appeal report, and not quite having find it on the, found this issue on the mitigated neg deck, we would weigh in to that extent about those issues, and perhaps there is something that can be said about fire prevention in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Are there additional calls coming in?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Okay. At this time, Delaney, if you could respond to the comments that have been made.
Hi, thank you. In regards to, just kind of touching on the two points, the flooding issue, I know Mr. Lee brought that up as well. Like I said originally, there is going to be requirements during improvement plan phase. Number one, we cannot allow this project to, you know, exacerbate an existing condition, so all runoff and drainage will have to be dealt with onsite. I mentioned there'll be a limited drainage report as well as a swale that, you know, at this point, the designs aren't complete, but we have a preliminary design of a swale running along the southern edge of the proposed driveway, which would collect and disperse water over on Site 1. So taking all that water away from the southern property line and moving it to the west. Additionally, with the trees, it's a little bit hard to see, but some of these green dots are indicating individual tag trees. Like I mentioned, this is more of an oak canopy overview, so when we look at overall mitigation, some of these trees identified are within that 50-foot of construction. However, they will remain. So not every tree identified on here is proposed to be removed. They will do their best to limit tree removal. And then we are also mitigating the project to pay for or replace trees that are removed, so an overall 3.3 acre oak woodland assessment of mitigation is required. Additionally, we have a mitigation measure that protects off-site trees, meaning that they're not allowed to remove or impact off-site trees, which is done through orange fencing and that kind of thing to make sure during improvement plans those trees are identified. And like I said, with the fencing here, we're hoping that, you know, there isn't any issues with the flooding or the tree impacts. In regards to, I think we heard the fire concern, I'll point out two things here. Go back to my tentative map. Okay, so we do have a fire hydrant located here. We also now, with this project being developed, have a EVA that was existing, so this EVA easement has been there. They're now, you know, connecting that EVA to connect to Vogal Valley Road, providing secondary fire access, so fire can come from Twin Rocks Road and Vogal Valley as well as through Warren Court. So in that case, we are addressing any evacuation issues by having two sources of egress for a fire. Additionally, that southern property line driveway placement does kind of act as a fire break, so we do see that as a potentially positive fire impact that, you know, this backyard is going to have a nice fire break from the oak woodland side up here. We also had South Placer weigh in during the mitigation, mitigated negative declaration, so they provided us their comments, which included this easement and access to the property.
A question, one of our concerns over the last number of months has been the use of wooden fencing, and just wanted to make sure that that wooden fence being proposed is not within five feet of any residential structure.
Gotcha, yeah. Being that this, these are the backyards, and kind of go to some of the photos here. Most of those backyards do not show structures, maybe some pools, landscaping, flat work, that kind of thing. But, yeah, with that road, again, no structures within five feet of the fence on Ms. Wilson's property, and no evidence of structures within five feet of the fence on the southern property.
All right, thank you.
See, I thought I heard you mention, now, this project has been reviewed by the fire marshal, local fire marshal?
Yeah, so South Placer Fire District did provide comments during the M and D, so that was circulated to them.
All right. County Council, typically, we don't have the applicant or appellant talk again, but I unfortunately said that they could, so I would suggest we allow both the applicant and the appellant one final comment before we bring them back to the board.
Sure. That certainly the discretion of the chair.
All right. Ms. Wilson again.
No, Ms. Wilson's here, but we have to get.
All right. Say that again. Okay, okay. But you're calling him now?
There it is.
Good morning. Is this Mr. Lyons?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're live in the hearing room. If you have any further comment?
Mr. Lyons and Ms. Wilson, typically, the commission doesn't, after the staff presentation or public comment, ask for additional comments, but I had said that Mrs. Wilson could make a statement. So, Ms. Wilson, you first, and then, if, Mr. Lyon, you have a further comment, you can make that, and then we'll bring it back to the commission.
Okay. So, one comment that I have is, the Vogels who owned all of this land, and they still live on Vogal Valley Road and are across from my lot, are extremely concerned about wildfires. And in light of the slew of California wildfires and the losses in towns like Paradise, I think it is imperative that fire safety is paramount. This is a very heavily treeed lot. If, you can see in these pictures, you can't even see through this lot. It's brush and trees. So I think there is an extreme fire hazard on this lot, and there was a fire last year just adjacent to this lot, at the horse staging area in the Folsom Lake Park. So, I know the Vogels called me and said it was very scary because it was very close to both of our lots. And this being such a heavily treeed lot, I think that it would be beneficial to all the neighbors if some of these trees actually were taken down. So...
Thank you.
And then plus, with the new homes on the properties, there'll be sprinkler systems, and it would be helpful to everyone in the neighborhood.
I have a question. Thank you. For Mrs. Wilson.
Okay. Yeah, Mrs. Wilson?
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question is dealing with your decision to go with the road, with the driveway on the south side instead of the north side? And so maybe you could give us a little bit more insight into your rationale there?
Well, you know, I took my engineer, the engineer suggested the south side. It's closer to the utilities, and it would be an easier build and less expensive.
Okay, thank you.
I would also like to say that, back to the fire hazard, I think that if these lots were developed and having a 20-foot paved road, it would be easier for fire vehicles to access the property in an area that would be more difficult to get to if this wasn't developed.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lyon, did you have any final comments?
Yes, so, I'm not concerned with her actually developing the property. And I spoke with the engineer when he, sorry, let me get this trimmed out. Okay, so for her comments on the fire, she was so concerned about the fire danger over the last 19 years, she hasn't cleared any of that grass or any of the inner brush out. I always have to go out and make a fire break along my property line. The fire wasn't actually adjacent to her property, it was closer to the road over in Folsom Lake. I opened up the gate for CAL FIRE to come through, so CAL FIRE was there. So her all of a sudden wanting to take care of our fire danger, which she hasn't done it for the last 18 years, is interesting. We talked with the engineer when he was actually surveying, he said that the north side would probably make more sense. There's no added cost because the sewer has to run all the way up the eastern boundary, so whatever she puts on the north or the south, it's exactly the same cost. The water's already in there. So I really don't know why she wouldn't put it to the north. It'd be more of a good neighbor policy. You know, we're five homeowners here that would be affected. We live here in Placer County, we're going to stay here in Placer County, and all we're asking for is for a good neighbor, put the road to the north, and we can be finished with this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lyon. At this time, then, public comment is closed, and bring them back to the commission for discussion? For discussion?
Well, you know, just trying to sort this out, as I look at what the plan that's been presented, it does have some logic to it because that road has to be put in on that side anyway for the EVA access. So why make a double effort to put in a road to the north and then have to put the one to the south as well? So, and I, to me, I can't, you know, it just seems like it's, the way it's been presented is probably the way I would have done it, had it been my property.
All right. Any other discussion? Larry or Sam, any discussion?
No, it seems pretty logical the way they're presenting it.
All right, thank you, Larry. Sam, I think you were talking, but we didn't hear you.
Oh, I can hear you now. I was just, the auditory here is a little bit low on my end, so I'm just listening. And I would agree that the logic with what Larry just said, so.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, did you have any comments there?
Mr. Grant, a guy, nobody talks. He's also an expirer guy.
I, you know, I don't know that I see where the location of the driveway is six of one, half a dozen of the other. The main road does have to go all the way down to the property corner to attach to the EVA. Whether that right-hand turn happens at the north or south end of the property is, it really matters to the owner, but I don't think to anybody else. And I can see the logic of wanting it down there. And so I, you know, with chairman's permission, I would go ahead and make a motion if there's no further discussion.
Just one other, wants to make some brief statements. I look at it and I see that this project and its request complies with the general plan, complies with the codes and ordinances, and it really is a request of the adjacent property owners to be good neighbors. But I believe a property owner has the right to make decisions, and I don't think the county can be in a position of making good neighbor policies. We're looking at the codes and ordinances, and this applies, so that's my suggestion. So, you're on.
I assume the errata has to be handled.
Okay.
Two separate motions here, or?
So you can do it all as one motion, to deny and uphold if that's the interest. Just make sure that when it references recommended conditions of approval, that you include the one that's included in the errata.
Okay. I would move that we deny the appeal, and that we uphold the parcel review chairman's decision to approve the minor land division, TLN 19-00123, supported by the findings and recommendation and recommended conditions of approval stated in the staff report, including the errata with the Condition 32, and adopt the prepared mitigated negative declaration. And do you want Item 32 read again in for the record, or just refer to the fact that it has already been read into the record?
I think you can refer to the fact it's already been read in, but just a minor housekeeping note, it should be 31A instead of 32, because there is another 32 in there.
Okay, I would amend my motion to reflect that.
We have a first?
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second? We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Okay, I have a first from Mr. Moss, a second from Mr. Nader, so a vote from Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
With the decision of the planning commission, this may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee. My understanding it was $619. That may have changed on July 1st, so do we have a new fee?
I don't know offhand. I guess probably best to just leave it as approximately $619.
We didn't change the fees because of COVID. We extended it for six months.
Okay, so the fee is $619 on the appeal. Thank you. All right. The next item is a timed item, is the Placer County Conservation Program. Members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Greg McKenzie and his consultant staff will be presenting this item. Mm-hmm.
Just a comment. So, you were saying... Something changed?
Yeah, that's what the recommendation was. That was the recommendation on...
Is this something we do all the time?
You know, I'd have to talk to EJ and Curtis, or Clayton on that.
Okay, because we're in fish.
All right.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Greg McKenzie, Placer County Conservation Program Administrator here at the Community Development Resource Agency, here today with the long-awaited, much anticipated Placer County Conservation Program. You may hear us in our presentation refer to it as the PCCP, so you know what we're talking about. So, this morning, we have for you several items for you to consider and to make recommendations on to the Board of Supervisors. With me today, and hopefully on the phone, several individuals. Aaron Gabby with ICF, who will be giving you additional information about the Habitat Conservation Plan, Natural Community Conservation Plan. Lauren Clark with Salix, who will be speaking about the County Aquatic Resources Program, or as we call it, the CARP. He will also be discussing two general plan amendments and various code amendments. We also have Bob Spencer to cover the cost and funding program. He's with Urban Economics and has been a longtime consultant to the county on lots of fee programs, including this one. Heidi Meckelson with ICF as well, she'll be covering the EIR/ES. And then I'll be wrapping it up with the summary recommendation for your consideration. Also, on the phone via Skype, we should have a couple of individuals, but the agencies who have been involved with us in the program for the past 18, 19, 20 years are also available to answer questions. And the California Department Fish and Wildlife should be represented on Skype by Kelly Barker, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service should be represented on Skype by Eric Tattersall. We also have representatives from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, State Water Resources Control Board, U.S. EPA, and NOAA Fisheries, should we need to go there with any questions. So, this morning, we asked that you consider the program, receive public testimony, consider that testimony, inform through your recommendation to the board the following actions, which I'll summarize quickly here. Final EIR, findings of facts, statement of considerations, and mitigation monitoring program. Placer County General Plan, Land Use and Natural Resources Amendments. Resolution to approve the conservation program and implementing agreement, and then two sections of county code. Chapter 19 would be a new section of county code to implement the conservation program, and then Chapter 17, which are various amendments to the zoning chapter of county code. So, let's talk about habitat conservation planning for a moment. Map on the right, map of California, and all the habitat conservation plans, Federal Endangered Species Act, natural community conservation plans through the state act. Really started down south in San Diego County. As you can see by the colors on the map, numerous locations in Southern California, moving up the Central Valley, San Joaquin Valley, coming up into our area, the map on the left, which represents Placer County. But there are multiple other conservation efforts going on. South Sacramento County, one of the most recent approved HCPs, so much like the PCCP. Yolo County, another recent approved plan. Santa Clara County, East Contra Costa, Stanislas, Lano. One more, which is kind of where we're at, working through the process, Butte County So, how did we get here? Back in 1994, the General Plan, Natural Resources Implementation Program Section 611 said, "County staff, please go forth and prepare for our adoption as a county, and then implement a natural community's conservation plan, habitat conservation plan, addressing conservation and maintenance of natural habitats in the county." That program also proposed, to some foresight, bring in wetland statutes, and so that speaks to the need to bring forward the County Aquatic Resources Program, because our species tend to be water-dependent, therefore, General Plan, Natural Resources Section said, "Bring all those forward in a program." Here we are. It's taken some time. It's 2001, a planning agreement was signed between the county and state and federal agencies to actually start down this road, so it's taken quite a bit of time, as you saw from the list of agencies, lots of work to be done there. And this is really born out of Placer legacy. Placer legacy is basically the umbrella program under the general plan that says to go ahead and prepare a habitat conservation plan, natural community conservation plan, work on watershed-level planning through ecosystem restoration plans, and acquire fee title interests and conservation easements consistent with the program goals. So, 2001 planning agreement. Few years later, 2005, county issues a notice of preparation, notice of intent to prepare a joint environmental impact report and environmental impact statement for the federal NEPA requirements. Planning efforts were going on throughout that time, but between 2007 and 2012, 40-some-odd iterations of the conservation strategy went back and forth between the plan partners and the state and federal agencies, trying to settle on a conservation strategy and make sure we have consensus, while all the agencies, all the requirements, we meet their requirements, considerable amount of time in that effort. That did involve the public, we'll speak about that here in a few minutes in further detail, but a lot of effort and many years going through those various conservation strategy maps to get to where we are today. So, what's the area we're talking about? So, the plan area for which the Placer County Conservation Program will cover is basically Western Placer County, from where we sit here today, roughly Highway 49 to the east, Sutter County to the west, Sacramento County to the south, Yuba and Nevada Counties to the north. Does not include the city of Roseville, Rockland, Town of Loomis, or City of Auburn. So, the conservation strategy built around two areas. Valley is dominated by brown pool grasslands, annual grasslands, and the foothills dominated by blue oak woodlands. Plan future growth area, so on this exhibit, basically the area in yellow includes incorporated city limits and sphere of influence, the city of Lincoln, unincorporated Placer County in our foothills, largely already fragmented by rural residential growth, other parts of Western Placer County in the unincorporated areas of Placer County, also rural residential agricultural areas. The green area, dark green area, is the reserve acquisition area. This is the area we've simply said to the agencies, through this conservation strategy, we will go and seek to conserve lands, to acquire fee title, to acquire conservation easements, to acquire agricultural conservation easements. So, that area overall, roughly 70,000 acres in that green area. Overall plan area within Western Placer County, 269,000 acres, not including those non-participating cities. The light green areas on that map are existing conserved lands. They're designated in the plan as EXR, existing conserved lands. Some of them have conservation easements on them. Some of them are simply owned by conservation organizations like Placer Land Trust, Wildlife Heritage Foundation, others that have interests in conservation, but not necessarily protected The conservation strategy is largely driven around that green area, but also the stream system, being the important connectors for connectivity between existing preserves, the future preserves that will be seeking to acquire and conserve, and those extend up into that future growth areas, you know. Auburn Ravine, Raccoon Creek, Doty Ravine, Dry Creek, they extend east to west across the county. So, those are important connections for species and their habitats throughout West Placer. So, there are additional coverage of this as we go through this presentation. I'll allow Aaron and Lauren to cover it in a little bit more detail, but I just wanted to provide you with the overview of the conservation strategy. For me to use, who are we talking about here? It's not just the county. We also have City of Lincoln, Placer County Water Agency. Hopefully, we'll cut that down to PCWA. You all know PCWA, our local water provider. And South Placer Regional Transportation Authority, in case we use acronyms, SPARTA for short. So, what are the activities covered by the plan? City and county, not only development projects, but our public infrastructure projects, roadways, waterways, water lines, sewer lines, flood improvements, things that today require permits, will continue to require permits, but have the ability to come in under the conservation program and be covered by the program. Placer Conservation Authority, so that is a joint power agency, which has been set up, set up earlier this year, approved by the board, approved by the City of Lincoln, set up with the Secretary of State. Basically, that entity will be responsible for taking fees, grant funding, and implementing conservation and mitigation actions in the reserve acquisition area. So, they have the mitigation, conservation authority to take care of really the conservation side of this program. Placer County Water Agency for its water infrastructure and operations and maintenance, so simple O and M projects that they have today typically require permits from state and federal agencies. Those would now come through Placer County Conservation Program and help streamline and hopefully reduce their time, reduce their costs, reduce their uncertainty in delivering reliable water. SPARTA for Placer Parkway and the Interstate 80, Highway 65 projects. So, what is a PCCP? Well, it's comprised of basically three areas. Western Placer County Habitat Conservation Plan, Federal Endangered Species Act, California Natural Community Conservation Planning Act for the state, so NCCP. Because of wetlands and the general plan requirement that said, hey, incorporate in wetlands, we have the Western Placer County Aquatic Resources Program, or CARP for short. It addresses Clean Water Act, so waters of the U.S., waters of the state, and now waters of the county, so streams, wetlands, and other water resources. We also have an in-lu fee program. That in-lu fee program was actually approved already by the board in 2018. It can exist separately from the PCP if it had to, but best that it be incorporated in and be consistent with the PCCP. And so, it is an element of this overall program, and it's been reviewed as such, and so it covers 404 Clean Water Act mitigation projects, and I'll show you one of those at the end of the presentation. What species are we talking about? Largely the ones that we run into with projects in Western Placer County. So, giant garter snake, western pond turtle, reptiles, amphibians, foothill yellow-legged frog, California red-legged frog, two species of fish, Central Valley steelhead, Central Valley fall-brown Chinook salmon. And then birds, Swansons Hawk. You commonly condition mitigate for project impacts for Swansons Hawk with development projects that come forward to this commission in the form of mitigation measures and conditions. California black rail, reclusive, marsh-oriented bird, hard to find, hard to see, but they are here. Western burrowing owl, tricolor blackbird. And then the invertebrates, Valley old-diberry longhorn beetle, brown pool fairy shrimp, brown pool tadpole shrimp, and conservancy fairy shrimp. So, the County Aquatic Resources Program. With that program, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the State Water Resources Control Board, actually, that program by its adoption allows them to grant to us programmatic permits. And so, those programmatic permits have permit thresholds in them, less than three acres cumulatively. Those tend to be permits that we at the county, City of Lincoln, can extend to project applicants instead of having them go straight to the Corps of Engineers. If it's greater than three acres, there are other permits that Lauren will cover as part of his presentation. You may be aware, I mentioned a year ago when I was in front of you, but as a reminder, the state water board about a year ago adopted some new state requirements, dredge and fill procedures, so mimic basically the Clean Water Act requirements the Corps of Engineers enforces. They put into place dredge and fill procedures. Under those procedures, the County Aquatic Resources Program, the PCP, would be a watershed plan for those purposes once we adopt. So, let's talk for a moment about the status quo. Status quo, lots of requirements for development projects. Project comes into the county, staff planner takes that project, takes it through pre-development, works through SEQA studies. Typically, a consultant comes on board, provides studies for everything from a wetland delineation to endangered species, presence-absence surveys, Swansons Hawk nesting and foraging, tricolor blackbird, all the species that we typically run into typically get covered under SEQA. That happens today. It will happen in the future nonetheless, even with the PCP in place. We still have to do SEQA. We still have to bring projects forward to this commission for its approval. But ultimately, when you go through those studies and you have a SEQA document, and that SEQA document comes forward to you all for consideration, more often than not, especially on the valley floor, it includes a requirement for that project to go get a 404 permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, to go get a 1600 authorization from the California Department Fish and Wildlife. If you start down that road, you also end up with some other requirements. 401 clean water certification from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, stormwater runoff requirements, BMPs, low-impact development standards, in addition to all the other requirements. But ultimately, you all today are issuing basically a condition, a mitigation that says, "Go talk to the Corps of Engineers. Go get your permit." Corps of Engineers looks at that wetland permit and says, "Well, potential endangered species habitat." They consult with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They consult with the National Marine Fisheries Service for any fish-related items, California Department Fish and Wildlife for the California Endangered Species Act, and they work on that. Sometimes, probably more often than not, a project that gets approved by this commission that ultimately wants to go forward... ultimately wants to go forward ends up negotiating with them for avoidance and minimization measures, conditions on covered activities, all those, it takes years. And ultimately, they come back to you to amend their project, takes time, takes money, it's uncertain, it's difficult. I've been through it myself. That's why we're here, is to move forward a program that builds all of that in. So projects still go through, pre-development, still work with planning, still will work on a SEQA document, still requires surveys, still require wetland delineations. But when it comes to the planning commission, you would then have a project with conditions and mitigation measures which say, here are your avoidance and minimization measures. Here are your conditions on covered activities. Here is your mitigation through the payment of fees. So all that gets boiled down into the Placer County Conservation Program that allows for a much more timely, well-thought-out program that results in better conservation outcomes than we get today. You all have seen the Galleria Vernal Pool Preserve that sits between the Galleria Mall and the Fountains Mall, high-density housing to the north, low-density housing to the west, isolated Vernal Pool, no genetic exchange in and out of that site. It is just an isolated preserve, whereas our conservation strategy says, okay, if you're going to impact in that area, we will get you to avoid and minimize to the extent possible. We're going to mitigate out in a bigger, larger, more contiguous area with connectivities with streams, connectivities up in the foothills and oak woodlands, connectivity for salmonids moving through the system, who are coming into the stream system to spawn, and then moving out the stream system to go carry out their life cycle out in the ocean. So we will cover more of that as we go along. Outreach. Over the past eighteen, nineteen, twenty years, then it's been lots of outreach. It started with the Placer Legacy Committee. That committee was formed to do the visioning around Placer Legacy and how it would work as a program. That transitioned into Biologic Working Group. I actually served on that group as a stakeholder, starting back, I think, in 2002. And so I carried forward in that role all the way up until I took this job and got to take on a different role. So that group was made up of stakeholders from environmental groups, developers, to land trusts, to others. So large group interests in conservation planning, both the conservation side, environmental, development interests involved. We also had independent science advisors looking at this to help us work through independently required this requirement by the state and federal agencies to address issues, science-based, independent, look at Vernal Pools, Vernal Pool Conservation, avoidance and minimization, long-term monitoring, reporting, adaptive management, things that they're well-equipped to advise us on. We also had an ad hoc committee. That ad hoc committee was comprised of the permittees, so two board of supervisor members, two Lincoln council members, PCWA, SPARTA, and staff. Finance committee, I also served on the finance committee for a time, which reviewed costs, funding, fees, and ultimately resulted in a third-party report that actually looked at, it was done by EPS, looked at what the conservation program, cost and funding strategy had in it, as well as other interested parties who have a background in finance and how to carry forward projects and make the whole cost and funding program adequate for a large conservation program. Also had the inter-agency working group comprised of all those state and federal agencies who worked with us throughout that whole time to come up with the conservation strategy that hopefully at the end of the day, they can write findings, write a record decision, write a biological opinion, issue programmatic permits to us. So lots of dates, lots of organizations just in the last two years between Fish and Game Commission, the MACS, County Ag Commission, County Planning Commission, 2018, other MACS, City of Lincoln Planning Commission, 2018, ultimately, 2019, as you may recall, in June, our EIR, EIS hit the street, was posted, county clerk, state clearinghouse, in the federal register, US federal register, and that started a few other work sessions and meetings to take comments. You all as a commission took comments in August of last year. So that leads us to what has happened since then. We have been working on responses to comments, provide meaningful comments, responses, and provide some final plan edits. All of those reviewed and we're in coordination with all the state and federal agencies. So it took some time to get us, once again, all coalesced around just something straightforward, it would seem, as responsive to comments, but it takes time. And then finally, our final EIR, EIS went forward to the county clerk, state clearinghouse, US federal register on May 22nd, 2020, and that leads us here today. So with that, I'm going to transition over to Aaron Gabby with ICF. He is going to walk you through at a high level the Habitat Conservation Plan and Natural Communities Conservation Plan.
Thank you, Greg. I'll use a pointer too, let me make sure. Yes, right? Yes. Hi, as Greg mentioned, I'm Aaron Gabby with ICF, consultant to the county, and I'm going to review, give you a little bit more in-depth background, what Greg introduced to you for the Habitat Conservation Plan and Natural Community Conservation Plan. I'll probably refer to it as the HCP, NCCP, or the plan for short. And this is the component of the PCCP that accompanies the incidental take permit applications to the US Fish and Wildlife Service and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And this dictates and explains how this plan, this component of the PCCP, will be implemented over the permit term, which is expected to be the next fifty years. So the plan was developed and will be implemented based on the following guiding principles. Really, of primary importance is to protect and enhance the ecological diversity and function of, in western Placer County while allowing appropriate and compatible growth. So it's not just a conservation plan, the permits are to permit appropriate and compatible growth. As a natural communities conservation plan, the plan focuses on sustaining natural communities representative of the western Placer County landscape. Restoration is also important, and so is management of these natural communities and habitats, and that's another guiding principle of the HCP, NCCP. As law, also, in addition to, ensuring the stability and sustainability of the populations of the covered species, the species that Greg just introduced to you, and contribute to the recovery of these species over time. As Greg mentioned, these are federally and state-listed species, most of them, and they're, they have that status for a reason. So the plan emphasizes contributing to their recovery over time, not just protecting them as is right now. Connectivity across the landscapes is another important aspect of the conservation strategy, both from the valley to the foothills, east-west and north-south, and also addressing cumulative impacts of the intensive land use and urbanization in Placer County. And I'll get to that in a minute. And really, that last point illustrates the geographic importance of areas of the plan. So Greg discussed this map earlier, but I want to, want to go over it again because it really dictates how this plan will be implemented over the next fifty years. And so in the dark green, again, are the areas where the Placer Conservation Authority will focus acquisition from willing sellers for the future reserve system. And these are consistent with general plan designations. The potential future growth area in this vanilla color is where development will be focused over the next fifty years. And these light green areas are areas that are currently protected for natural resource purposes. And these are sort of the backbone of what this future reserve system will look like. The plan will build off these existing reserves to expand and hopefully connect these existing reserves to create a larger reserve system that sort of spans from the valley floor to the foothills. And again, the plan is subdivided into the foothills and the valley. And so the reason why this plan area is subdivided geographically is to focus the conservation strategy and the plan itself on the land uses typical of an area and also the natural resources such as Vernal Pool grasslands and agriculture and oak woodlands and associated grasslands. Of course, the plan also includes the stream system, and Lauren's going to talk about this in more depth when he talks about the CARP. This is an important aspect of the waters component of the PCCP, but also for the fish that are proposed to be covered by the plan, the salmonids. So the streams in red are streams that have salmonid populations that will be covered by the plan in them. And we refer to this area actually as the stream system. It's more than just the course, the channel of the streams. And it's defined in the plan and includes the hundred-year floodplains. As you get further down the valley, the stream system widens, doesn't include reservoirs and also the streams within the non-participating cities. There are a few places outside of this primary plan area of western Placer County that are within the plan area. We refer to that as plan area B. So the primary plan area in the map that we've been showing you is also referred to as plan area A. So a handful of activities addressed and covered by the plan will occur in plan area B. So it's really small on the map, but the plan is already, the county's already purchased credits at the Big Gun Conservation Bank. That is actually an action required by the conservation strategy. That's technically in plan area B. And so are a couple of watercourses, the creeks west of the plan area where actions may occur to benefit the covered fish. And also including in this, the non-participating cities of Auburn, Rockland, Loomis, and Roseville as well. There will be a few activities actually covered by the plan that will occur in this area, but they're very specific, very few, and the plan describes the limits on those activities. Won't go over the list again of covered species, but it's pretty important to bring them up again because this is what the HCP and NCCP focuses on in addition to the natural communities and habitats that these species occur in. I think one thing to remind you again of, that most of them are listed either by the state or the US Fish and Wildlife Service. So anyone who could take or impact their habitats would need to deal with permitting through these agencies. There are some species on this, on this list that aren't listed now, but might be over the course of the permit term, so it was wise to address them and get coverage for them now to get ahead of their potential listing. So because this is a natural communities conservation plan, in addition to an HCP, the state component, we're addressing the natural communities that are characteristics of the western Placer County landscape. Those are the grasslands and the Vernal Pool complexes that dominate the western or valley portion of the landscape, aquatic and wetland complex, riverine and riparian complex. We call this complex, it's really a kind of a term that comes out of the mapping when we're planning at a very large scale. These aquatic and wetlands, there are diversity of types within a complex, so we just call it aquatic wetland complex. It might include fresh emergent wetlands, marshes, and seasonal wetlands, similar with riverine and riparian complex, valley oak woodlands and oak woodlands. Plan also addresses semi-natural communities, which we describe here as rice lands and field crops. These are obviously very important to the economic and cultural heritage of the plan area, and they also provide habitat for the covered species, at least some of them. Though they're addressed similar, but not identical to the natural communities, and other agriculture such as orchard and vineyard, which really don't provide habitat for the covered species, but there will be fees related to impacting those kinds of agriculture. So the covered activities are organized, and these are the activities that would be covered and allowed under the incidental take permits. They're described in the plan in far more detail. There's a broad array of them, and they really correspond fairly well to geographic location and designation of the plan area. And that's how the plan characterizes these covered activities. So I'm going to provide a few examples for each area to give you a sense of the activities that are proposed for coverage under the plan. So in the valley potential future growth area, this is A1, and I told you there's a lot of geographic subdivisions here, thus the pointer. A1 here, really see, the plan focuses on covering activities related to urban development, public facilities, capital improvement projects, land use consistent with rural and agricultural general plan designations. Within the valley and foothill conservation and rural development area, so we've also referred to this as the reserve acquisition area, so A2 is really in fine print, and A3, I can barely see it without my glasses, here, these are areas more rural character, and of course, the activities that will be covered generally are characterized as rural residential activities, non-residential development, of course, public and private facilities. And again, these are examples, there's a very extensive list.
I had a question on A1. Does that basically cover the city of Lincoln sphere of influence? Is that what that is?
Mm-hmm. Some activities don't adhere necessarily specifically to a certain geographic area, so the plan refers to them as regional public programs. And those can occur anywhere within plan area A, but they can also occur as specified in the plan within the non-participating cities. So that is actually B1 and B2. So for example, PCWA might need to do some O and M work or other work within the non-participating cities. We've described that in the plan, that would be covered by the plan. Same with transportation projects. So these really include the large-scale public programs we're all familiar with such as wastewater, water supply, solid waste management, public parks, and utilities. So just to clarify, B1 is the non-participating cities. It's gray, including Auburn. B2, which is not mapped, is zone, PCWA is zone one, so it doesn't map out well. And also finally, covered activities are categorized as those that occur in the stream system, so in-stream activities, and those are the typical bridge construction and maintenance, flood control and stormwater management, natural resource management actions like bank stabilization projects, water utility and water supply and operations and maintenance. And this is finally, the last group of covered activities are those necessary to implement the conservation strategy. So those will be primarily implemented by the Placer Conservation Authority, and those include habitat enhancement actions, restoration, so it could be grading to create Vernal Pools or restore Vernal Pools or wetlands, monitoring and research activities, fuel management on the reserve system, and in-stream conservation actions. So those in-stream conservation actions can occur where it's deemed necessary for achieving the plan. It might not be necessarily in the reserve system per se, but within the stream system itself. So the plan doesn't cover everything, of course, and so to be clear, the plan has a small section that describes activities not covered by the plan. So just to name a few examples, act- So just to name a few examples, activities implemented by the non-participating cities themselves, so those under the jurisdiction, say of Roseville, they're not covered. Routine and ongoing agricultural activities, expansion of cultivated agriculture into natural lands. This one is really any project that already has their own permits, so they don't need to get coverage under these plans. General plan amendments to rezone for more intensive land uses in the areas designated for reserve system acquisition, and minor activities such as small parcel-related activities. At the core of this plan, the conservation plans, is the conservation strategy. We've talked about this a little bit. Really, the heart of this is the acquisition over the course of the permit term of the reserve system, which through primarily within that reserve acquisition area will over time become a large interconnected reserve system of protected lands, lands protected in perpetuity under conservation easements. And that's primarily where protection enhancement and restoration of natural communities and the covered species habitats will occur. The plan also focuses on stream protection and enhancement as well as avoidance, and that's more along the lines of the CARP, but it's also a part of the HCP/NCCP. And this is primarily for protecting and improving habitat for the covered fish species and of course, water quality and other hydrological values. Some of the actions that might occur within streams to benefit the covered fish include removing and modifying barriers to fish passage, screening water diversions that might suck up fish, and improving in channel features such as reds or the locations where the fish spawn. Wetlands are also an important component of the conservation strategy. Again, to protect, enhance, restore, and create wetlands. And the restoration and creation of wetlands is to compensate for loss of wetlands, the no net loss of wetlands. And avoidance and minimization, the conservation strategy includes an aspect that includes project, site-specific, and avoidance and minimization requirements for certain resources, not all, not every resource addressed by the plan. So how much land and habitat will be protected over the permit term for the natural communities and covered species? So each, the plan includes reserve targets for each natural community, which will protect and agriculture, certain agriculture types, which will protect habitat and populations of the covered species. On the left is the amount of each natural community that's already protected. So close to 16,000 acres in Western Placer County are already protected. In the course of the permit term, over 47,000 acres, so a good chunk of the natural communities, representative of natural communities will be protected. And in total, over 63,000 acres should be protected by the end of the permit term. And that, that will create this large interconnected reserve system primarily within this green area, the reserve acquisition area. And I should emphasize that this acquisition is for, to mitigate the covered activities, the impacts and take of the covered activities. But the state program, the natural communities conservation program, also includes a component that goes above and beyond mitigation. We refer to that as conservation. And those aren't, those actions aren't funded by mitigation. They're funded by non-mitigation dollars such as grants, federal and state grants. So it's important to acknowledge both components of funding sources and for different reasons contribute to this overall, overall reserve system. So the plan includes conditions on covered activities. These are the typical county project conditions that you might see. You have general conditions, so I realize this is kind of a long list, but try and go through them quickly. These general conditions are conditions on covered activities, typical best management practices, avoidance and minimizations to protect and, protect and avoid impacts to watershed hydrology and water quality. There are also design requirements in specific areas where new development might be adjacent to a reserve system or reserve, just to minimize impacts on the reserve system of adjacent development. There's conditions on land conversion, that's essentially a land conversion mitigation fee. There are conditions to minimize temporary effects, avoid and minimize temporary effects, the typical worker training to make sure that folks implementing the covered activities adhere to plan requirements. There are also conditions on covered activities to avoid and minimize effects on the natural communities. Not all of the natural communities, but a few of the select most sensitive natural communities. And also, conditions to avoid and minimize effects on the stream system. This is really the avoidance of permanent encroachment on the stream system. That's sort of the one big component of the CARP that Lauren Clark will talk about. And also to restore the stream system, that's important. There are also conditions to avoid and minimize effects on the, on certain species. The list looks long, but it's not all of the species. And again, they're the typical construction-related best management practices and avoidance and minimization measures. And regional public programs have their typical best management practices as well, such as construction BMPs, O&amp;M operations and maintenance best management practices, especially in the rural areas. And finally, there are conditions on reserve management. So there are very strong limitations on public access and recreation on the future reserve lands. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and Department of Fish and Wildlife work closely with us to create a list of restrictions on the types of activities that can occur on these reserve lands, because the reserve lands are intended to protect the ecosystem values for the covered species and natural communities. However, there is going to be some very limited recreation on the reserve system. And so when that does occur, there are a series of restrictions on those types of recreation, just to minimize the effects and impacts on those natural resources. Some lands have already been incorporated into this reserve system. The plan refers to them as jumpstart lands. So if there are recreational uses on those lands now, they will continue until recreation management plans are created for those, those jumpstart lands. A few things that the county and the other permities will be responsible for in implementing this plan, basic annual reporting on the status and progress of the plan to the wildlife agencies. I say wildlife agencies, again, as a reminder, because I'm talking about the Endangered Species Act permits, both state and federal, and not the waters permits. And these just are, are basic types of annual reporting requirements, such as the, the actions undertaken by the Placer Conservation Authority to assess how the covered species and habitats are doing on the reserve system, how the PCA and the permities are progressing towards achieving the biological goals and objectives of the plan, and descriptions of how the plan, the management actions are being adaptively managed, how the management actions are effective in achieving the goals, and there might be some specific studies to assess the efficacy of management actions, and then a description of any changed or unforeseen circumstances. These are, this is a specific term, and there's an entire component, a small component of the plan that addresses changed or unforeseen circumstances.
Before moving on reporting, and this is a request of Steve, I think I would like as a planning commissioner to receive any written reports, but on an annual basis, a report on the effectiveness and especially what's working, what's not working, just to keep us informed as these projects come forward.
Sure, we can do that, working with the PCA.
Great. So this is my last slide, so I'll end on the final overarching aspects of plan implementation. There's an implementing agreement, that's an agreement signed amongst the permities and the wildlife agencies that identifies the specific roles and responsibilities of the permities and the wildlife agencies themselves. Say this because I want to emphasize here that the wildlife agencies are partners in this implementation. They've been partners in developing the plan, and they will be here for the next 50 years in helping, helping the county implement this plan. The HCP/NCCP is implemented by the permities. So again, the county, the Placer Conservation Authority, PCWA, and SPARTA. However, the Placer Conservation Authority is created to implement the plan and the CARP on behalf of the permities. So you have an agency that will, will take care of the bulk of the responsibilities. When it comes down to what the county gets from the permit streamlining that Greg talked about, is that each permity will be provided take authorization under the state and federal permits for, for the covered species. And the county, in this case, may extend take authorization under the permits for projects and activities that the county has jurisdiction over, consistent with the requirements in the HCP/NCCP and the implementing agreement. So there's an entire chapter in the plan on how this is done. And this gives local control to this permitting. And finally, a couple of other things, the county's responsible for tracking and reporting HCP/NCCP compliance, all those things we just talked about in the previous slide. So with that, I just want to end on, on this final point, that the permities are ultimately responsible for compliance with the state and federal permits and ensuring success of the plan. So with that, Lauren Clark.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Good. Could you, or maybe some point in time, I guess we'll maybe go into the, but the PCA, could you talk a little bit about the makeup of that committee?
Yeah, you mean the Placer Conservation Authority?
Yeah.
Yeah. And. Greg.
Won't need the pointer. So yes, the Placer Conservation Authority, established, as Aaron indicated, I did previously, to implement the program, the conservation actions and mitigation actions. So that entity has been set up. It's currently comprised of two board of supervisor members with a third as an alternate in case one of those two can't serve in that capacity, one City of Lincoln council member, and then behind them will be staff, but also as part of the Placer Conservation Authority will also be a 12-member citizens advisory committee. So we will pull in people from environmental interests, ag interests, development community, land trusts, to help us as a Placer Conservation Authority to effectively implement the program. Also have the science advisors sitting there to help inform that group as to adaptive management for climate change purposes, other things that may be occurring. Are, are actions to graze and use fire to maintain fuel loads, do shaded fuel breaks, are those effective? Are they resulting in the outcomes that the plan says will happen over time? So yeah, large group, but currently comprised of two board members, one city council member.
And staff-wise, I guess probably still under consideration?
To be determined.
Okay.
Ultimately, yes, there will be an executive director there, there will be land acquisition, reserve system management, largely intended to not serve as another county or city organization. It's largely set up to operate as a separate JPA, to have its own separate staff.
So they'll handle all their own fiscal and land acquisition and pretty much everything will be separate, be a separate entity within the authority from the county?
Yes, sir. There will be some crossover where it makes sense, where we have existing facilities, existing mechanisms, for instance, GIS, Geographic Information Systems. It's already here, we've been developing all this information for the past 20 years at the county. It makes sense to keep that here, the hardware is here, the staff knowledge is here, we already have professional staff. We can have them on loan to the Conservation Authority. Other plans do the same. They may have a city attorney serving as a staff attorney to the JPA. They may have a senior planner from a city, they may have another planner from the county, and they may pull in a land acquisition person from existing resources, so you don't have to duplicate all of that if it already exists.
Okay. I think we're getting there, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lauren Clark with State Consulting. Good to see some familiar faces, it's been a while. My focus this afternoon is going to be on the County Aquatic Resources Program itself. It's really a subset of the HCP/NCCP effort, and it really focuses on those covered activities that have impacts to what we call aquatic resources of Placer County. It's kind of a catch-all because we're dealing with not only federal law, the Clean Water Act, which receives a significant amount of attention, 404 permits, but also local ordinances and local policy. Placer County has had a policy interest in wetlands and aquatic resources in a variety of forms since the 1994 general plan. This slide gives you that basic organizational breakdown, is, is you have a local interest in these resources expressed primarily by policy, and we deal with it through discretionary review and California Environmental Quality Act. You have the HCP/NCCP itself, which is dealing with aquatic resources. All of those invertebrate, vernal pool species have their entire life cycle inside of aquatic resources, and then more specifically, the CARP itself, which is focused on primarily the Clean Water Act with two key sections. When you go back to 1994 and you look at the policy, and it's similar policy today, the county talked about no net loss of wetlands. That's an expression borrowed from how the Corps of Engineers regulates federal waters. But it's also dealing with waters from the perspective of the state of California and even the Fish and Wildlife Service as they look at waters as habitat. You also have the CARP and its regulatory program mirroring how we've been looking at wetland policy and mitigation over the last 20 some odd years. Avoid the resource, you've heard this before with Aaron and Greg's talk, minimize effects on the resource, and if you still have to, you mitigate or compensate for those losses, the goal achieving a no net loss standard. So this general plan policy is what you find in the CARP documents. In terms of the resources themselves, you have on this slide primarily freshwater marshes and riparian areas. And what's interesting is if you look to the east, you actually find more freshwater marsh and riparian in the foothills than you do on the valley floor. This is largely as a result of how we use water in Placer County. Placer County is blessed with a lot of irrigation water, PCWA, NID, South Sutter. That water is used to irrigate in the foothills, and as it spills across the landscape in a variety of forms, it creates wetlands. On the valley floor, you tend to have the riparian systems and smaller marsh systems, but you also have, what you see in various shades of green on this figure, the vernal pool resources. So this map shows the complexes, that includes the upland component, it'd be 5% wet to 95% dry, and that's actually a fairly high-dense vernal pool complex. But it's all across the valley floor where you find primarily grasslands. In terms of the streams themselves, three of the streams, as previously mentioned, do have Salmon and Steelhead. That includes streams in the Dry Creek system, Secret Ravine, Miners Ravine in particular, Coon Creek, a raccoon creek system, which includes Doty Ravine, and then Auburn Ravine as well, which has a very robust cold freshwater fishery. You also have ponds scattered across the landscape. While the PCCP isn't covering major reservoirs, those ponds oftentimes have aquatic resources. They have wetlands associated with them, either because they're shallow or in the fringes. So all of those tend to be our aquatic resources. When you look at the conservation strategy of the CARP, it's the conservation strategy of the HCP/NCCP. When you look at the conservation strategy of the CARP, it's the conservation strategy of the HCP and CCP. They're the same. So the CARP relies upon the larger context of the conservation strategy of the HCP and CCP. What are we doing? We're avoiding aquatic resources primarily within the reserve area. This is a very different look at how you avoid resources. If you looked at old general plan policy, it said avoid onsite, mitigate onsite in kind. We're now starting to look at things at a landscape scale to say, avoid within the reserve system, allow some degree of effects to occur at the project. In addition to avoidance within the reserve system, the plan emphasizes avoidance within the stream system itself. It also emphasizes improving water quality through the application of low-impact development standards, and if you do have to mitigate, enhance, restore, and create wetlands primarily in the stream system and in the reserve area. The previous slides you saw in relationship to the stream system showed you where the stream channel was located. The stream system is actually the stream channel and an associated buffer area. So it has a larger geographic context, in many cases, a much larger geographic context than just the stream channel itself. If you look to the extreme west of the valley floor, down there by Auburn Ravine and Coon Creek, at the Sutter County line, it's one, two miles in width in terms of where the 100-year floodplain is. As you move east, the stream channel tightens up, the floodplain starts to go away, and this so-called stream system boundary or buffer distance shrinks as a result. So you can have anywhere from 600 feet to the width of the floodplain on the valley floor, to as little as 50 feet on the east side. That is the overall stream system boundary. It's an extremely important part of the plan, as you've heard it being mentioned many times. With the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers specifically, they are turning over to local government, the County of Placer, City of Lincoln, the ability to issue permits literally around the corner at that front counter and through entitlements that will be considered in this room by you and the zoning administrator and parcel review committee. Three types of permits, a regional general permit, that'll be issued to PCWA and the Placer Conservation Authority. The Corps will still issue that permit through a streamlined process. Probably the most important permit in terms of day-to-day activity that this commission will see will be the programmatic general permit. And you can see the thresholds there. Staff will bring forward those authorizations to authorize impacts to aquatic resources appended to whatever discretionary entitlement is being brought. So if it's tentative map, there'll be a programmatic general permit and a CARP authorization attached to that tentative map. At some scale, you get beyond the ability to meet those smaller thresholds of projects. The first here is a letter of permission, that is something that the Corps will issue through an abbreviated process if you do not qualify for the PGP. In terms of the process itself, the figure on the right implies a fair amount of complexity, but it's really just providing the details. The series of yes, nos really gives you context. Are you a covered activity of the HCP and CCP? If yes, do you have aquatic resources? If yes, can you avoid those resources? If no, you need a CARP authorization for whatever your entitlement is. Do you qualify for the programmatic general permit? You submit an application to SEEDRA, this is bundled with your other application requirements. Staff, as they often do in the secret process, will look to avoid or minimize impacts, if possible. If you do have an effect, you pay mitigation fees for the remaining effects. If you don't qualify for the programmatic general permit, then you apply directly to the Corps of Engineers for either the letter of permission or a standard permit. Even if you find yourself at the Corps, there's still an abbreviated process, and in a process that creates a great deal more certainty than status quo. One, there's the tearing benefits for programmatic EISEIR. Two, there's use of the conservation strategy already adopted. How do you avoid, how do you minimize effects? And if you have effects, how do you provide mitigation? That's not a project-by-project negotiation, it's based upon the outcomes of this planning effort. There's an in lieu fee program. So you already have the fee program established for payment and mitigation fees, and then the mitigation requirements themselves are programmatic and predictable and more certain. In addition to the adoption of the HCP and CCP in lieu fee program, we also have a few items that need to come before this commission and the board ultimately to implement the PCCP. First, we have a couple of general plan amendments, as well as county code amendments. The general plan amendments are really focused on ensuring that the general plan policy document, as it was amended in 2013, is amended at the end of this process to reflect that there is an adopted PCCP. So as Greg showed you, Program 611 said do an HCP and CCP. Now that it's done, we need to amend the general plan to reflect that. There's a new goal in the land use chapter, Section 1, that reads as follows, "To implement the Placer County Conservation Program in Western Placer County to protect and enhance ecological diversity and function while allowing appropriate and compatible growth." And then two policies implement that. In Section 6, or Chapter 6 of the general plan, you have the Natural Resources Chapter. There are nine policies receiving amendments, and again, it's similar language. It's getting language to reflect the terminology of the PCCP, that's evolved some, as well as to ensure that projects are consistent with the outcomes of the PCCP. In terms of county code, there's a whole series of amendments that are being considered. The focus today with the commission is on Chapter 17, which is the zoning ordinance, and a brand-new chapter, Chapter 19, which will be known as Conservation, Open Space, and Woodland Conservation. In terms of Chapter 17, there's a whole series of amendments being considered at this time, and when the board considers this. It also may be coming back to the commission at a future date, sometime next year, with even more amendments. We are taking care of the critical day-one implementation amendments at this time. One, new definitions, they need to be in county code. The Plan Development Ordinance needs to specifically reflect the open space areas that could be set aside as part of decisions made around the PCCP. All of the discussion around the stream system. There's an older version of that, which was known as the Water Course Setback Requirements. They don't reflect the PCCP stream system standard, so both of those are coming into the code with changes. An application requirement, you now need to apply for the CARP, you need to apply for take authorization under the HCP and CCP. Linking extensions of time, if you get a PCCP authorization to proceed, you want that link to any extension of time on your entitlement. And that also include the new Chapter 19 in enforcement procedures. In terms of 19 itself, the primary and most important thing that gets adopted by the Board of Supervisors is Article 19.10, which is the PCCP Implementation Ordinance. So we need an ordinance in county code to implement the PCCP. Second bullet is one of the most important bullets or requirements of this chapter, which is to require covered activities to comply with the PCCP. So if you're in that part of the Western Placer County, unincorporated area, and you have a covered activity, you need to have compliance with the PCCP. The ordinance also establishes the PCCP development fee, so it's the implementing ordinance for that fee, and it authorizes take and impacts to aquatic resources. This whole 19-year exercise has been done to get to that very last bullet. And it's one of the most succinct and short statements in the entire process, but probably the most important. Another new article, 19.30, which is the Open Space and Fire Hazard Management Fee. This is a companion fee to the PCCP development fee. For foothill properties not covered by the plan, you'll hear a little bit more about that in the discussion on the fee program and funding plan. And not so much a new article as an article that's been shifted. Article 19.50 is the old tree ordinance that's currently housed in Chapter 12. So we're moving the tree ordinance from Chapter 12 to Chapter 19, which is a better fitting for it. And then three changes. One, there's a whole series of antiquated references and language. For example, there's a requirement to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I think the Board of Zoning Appeals was probably gone in the late 1980s, early 1990s. Also, the California Environmental Quality Act and the Public Resources Code specifically had changes that need to be reflected in the county's tree ordinance. Simple example, the county tree ordinance considers a tree something at six inches diameter breast height. State law changed that to five inches at diameter breast height, if you are an oak tree. So we need to reflect that in the code. And then lastly, and most importantly, is we needed to amend that article to show when PCCP requirements apply and when the traditional tree ordinance applies. My understanding that SEEDRA and planning continue to work on an update to the tree ordinance, and you may see more comprehensive changes on that ordinance in the future. And with that, I'll be turning it over to Bob Spencer.
Lauren, can I ask you a question before you leave? Obviously, we're talking primarily west of Highway 49. If we're changing ordinances, how does that apply to those that are east of 49?
If it's east of 49 and you're outside the PCCP area, you won't be affected.
So it would be the, it would be the old ordinances would apply in that area, so is that correct?
Yeah, when you, if you take a look at Chapter 19, there's an applicability section, specifically on the PCCP Implementation Chapter, and it tells you where geographically that code will apply. That applicability reference is used all throughout county code and other places. So it always will direct you back to the PCCP only if you're within that geographic area.
Okay, I have a question too. Go ahead.
Don't go away.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, whichever. The federal permits that we're now, that the county's now going to be able to process internally, and you said they're going to be streamlined. I know we're constantly seeing applications for extensions of maps in here because, and their base reason is, took us this long to get our federal permits. How much faster is the county going to be able to be?
Well, if it's issued through the programmatic general permit, that is within the decision-making timelines and processes of the county. So as you go through your discretionary review process through the Development Review Committee or Design Site Review Committee, wherever you're going through that, you're picking up that Clean Water Act decision at the same time.
Okay, but the county's review of that data to the federal standards, because my understanding is, is we're not shortcutting anything, we're not eliminating any part of the review process, we're just able to do it in-house.
Yeah, the federal standard, so to speak, will be the PCCP conservation strategy. So applicants that adhere to that will receive an authorization as part of their discretionary approval to proceed with impacts to aquatic resources of Placer County, which is state as well, as part of that same approval that they get from the county. It's appended to that approval. There's still a review process by the Corps of Engineers for verification of the wetland delineation, that single act, as well as for compliance on issues related to cultural resources, which is not yet a part of the PCCP, but we hope to make it a part in the future.
Now, one more quick question, if I could, please. On the stream system standards, I didn't mark where I was reading it, but there's specific setbacks from center of stream in that, whether it be seasonal or year-round and what have you, and then it then defers back, but if it's different in the local community plan, the community plan is the dominant factor. Is that correct?
So various community plans have a structural setback standard. The PCCP's stream system requirements aren't just a structural setback standard, it's a ground disturbance standard. So if you have ground disturbance that impacts an aquatic resource, and it's non-structural, so you're building a road that's subject to grading permit approval, the stream system requirements will apply under those circumstances, as opposed to the traditional 50 feet from center line, because they want to build a building.
Okay.
So it's taking a very different approach, and that would apply to areas in community plans that have those old structural setbacks.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Got questions. Let me see, you get out into the very western part of the county where you have a lot of rice production, and we heard earlier that that is, it's not totally wetland, but it is compatible with that wetland. And what we see quite a bit now is those lands being converted to orchards, which would be outside of what the PCCP would like to see. But I guess, are there any controls, or what are you going to, what's the PCCP going to do with those types of situations?
So the activity of converting any crop from one type to another, whether it's rice to orchard or orchard to rice, is not a covered activity of the PCCP. So if there is a regulatory consequence of making that change, it's not a covered activity of the PCCP, so the county won't have discretion over that. The Placer Conservation Authority will not have anything to say about that other than to monitor those activities should they take place. If it requires approvals through lake and stream bed alteration agreements or sections of the Clean Water Act that apply to those act conversions, those farmers, those landowners will have to comply with those statutes outside of the PCCP. So as these lands convert, the Placer Conservation Authority is simply going to have to adjust to whatever that land cover condition is when they proceed with their activities. There's been over 4,000 or 5,000 acres, is a rough guess, of rice to orchard, or at least grassland to orchard, in Western Placer County over the last few years.
Okay. That's what I kind of, I figured, but I just wanted to hear what the official determination was on that. In the past, there's been, you know, some developments that have, even Caltrans, where they affected a wetland. And there's been some organizations that established a bank that, you know, that Caltrans or whoever was doing it could pay into, and they would establish, you know, a wetland or whatever within that bank. And so how are those covered in the PCCP? And I guess part of the question is, you know, who's, it'll have a conservation easement, but who's monitoring and managing those?
Greg's pointing at me to answer, but as an ex-banker, I think I'll let him apply his expertise.
So our goal with mitigation banks, they're in the landscape today. We have numerous mitigation banks. Orchard Creek Mitigation Bank, one of the original wildlands mitigation banks. Antonio Mountain Ranch Mitigation Bank, just to its west, just on the north end of the Sunset Plan area. Both banks covered by conservation easements, exist today, sell credits to county projects, sell credits to probably Sacramento County projects, sell credits to Yuba, Sutter, other projects are all having inputs into those mitigation banks. So largely, our goal has been to work with those mitigation banks. We have an equal interest in them being successful, they want to see us be successful. So in theory, we could, as the Placer Conservation Authority, purchase mitigation credits from those banks if they meet our standards. And so Antonio Mountain Ranch, for instance, has been already providing mitigation credits to the Placer Vineyards projects. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service said, okay, if you want to use that bank, the bank has to comply with the standards in the conservation program, even though it's not adopted yet, that was their requirement. So they made some modifications, were able to sell those credits. So it's largely a program where we'll all work together to make sure they're successful, make sure we're successful. And, you know, to the extent they want to sell us credits, we may buy credits from them where it makes sense.
And so the conservation easements, or who's held them, or who's holding them?
So very good question. So the reserve system, as we acquire, conserve lands, or record conservation easements on them, we have to have a conservation easement, we have to have a conservation holder. That will probably come in various forms. At the end of my presentation, I have a couple pieces of property I will mention, I'll just mention one right now. County, through the Board of Supervisors, 2018 authorized me to go acquire the 400-acre Bradley property on the east side of Sheridan. It's 400 acres, roughly 40 acres of vernal pools and other wetlands, occupied by California Black Rail, tri-colored blackbirds, Swins' Hawk foraging, a great sight. It's roadless, nothing on it other than wetlands and species, and it's used by the Bradley property, Bradley family, for grazing purposes. It has been for eons. They continue on a grazing lease today. And so ultimately, to count that piece, or any other piece within the reserve system to meet the requirements of our permits, we have to have a conservation easement recorded. It must be perpetual, must be covered by an endowment in perpetuity to make sure we can manage it, maintain it as species habitat. So we will have a conservation easement, is the short answer. So we will have a conservation easement, is the short answer.
Will that also apply to the land trust, Placer Land Trust?
Yeah, typically, the land trusts, they'll buy property, they own property today that has no conservation easements. There's one example where we actually have an irrevocable offer of dedication on the Harvego Bear River property, it's the property bordering the Bear River, 1,700 acres, I believe. We actually hold an irrevocable offer of dedication, so we help them buy that property. We use some mitigation funds, which don't count, we use some other funds through Placer Legacy that were non-mitigation funds to help them buy it. Roughly $4 million worth of county funds went into that. For that, we get the ability to record a conservation easement on that property, protect it in perpetuity. But they do own others that are not covered. On our plan area map, you see the dark green, but you see those light green pieces in areas that may or may not ultimately be part of the reserve system. They may just exist as open space lands owned by the Placer Land Trust or Wildlife Heritage Foundation, but largely, to the extent we can, we'll try to work with them to record a conservation easement on those properties, develop a habitat management plan for those properties, fire management plan for those properties, to make sure they can be preserved in perpetuity. We wouldn't want to see those then go back into a development project, if you will, so...
Okay, thank you.
So we are now on to development fees and funding plan, which is Bob Spencer. Bob Spencer is remote, he's with Urban Economics, he's been attached to our program for many years. Bob, hopefully you're there, and I will advance the slides at your direction.
Okay, can you hear me all okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, so proceed.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. So let's go to the funding plan objectives, next slide. So of course, any plan of this magnitude needs a funding plan for implementation. The primary issues we're dealing with in the funding plan was first funding adequacy. This is a requirement of the permit, that the plan demonstrate that it can be adequately funded, not only over the 50-year permit term, but also that annual costs for management and monitoring can be funded in perpetuity through an endowment that will be built up over the 50-year permit term. So the endowment won't kick into gear until after the end of the permit, we'll have 50 years to grow up, which is a big advantage, actually, from a funding perspective. Then we have to look at the development fee schedule. Of course, a large component is plans to mitigate impacts of covered activities. That development fee had to comply with the mitigation fee act, and we had to make sure that we were funding the plan, funding the mitigation side of the plan adequately through that fee schedule. Then another big component of funding plan comes from state and federal grant funding. We had to delineate exactly how much and how that would be measured in terms of dollars and acres for land acquisition and wetland restoration. All right, next slide, the overview, I'm going to go over the costs, all this in brief, high-level cost and the funding plan, the amounts, the categories of sources of funds, and then we'll dig into the development fee in a bit more detail, because that's a major component of funding plan. All right, going to the cost model, you can see in this next slide, the major cost factors that went into that, you know, of course, land acquisition costs, management and monitoring, cost of restoration projects, which are very expensive, the creation and restoration of wetlands, and then permanent administration costs. These are all based on local cost factors that were updated continuously as we moved through the development of the plan over the last several years. We also had some peer review of these cost input factors from Placer County Landowners Group and from our finance committee that we've formed, which had a third of this group of stakeholders represented on. The types of costs we're talking about, we have one-time capital costs, we have ongoing costs for management and monitoring and plan administration, for example. And then there is a component in the cost model for plan preparation. Now, these are the costs that the county fronted out of its general fund to pay for the plan preparation, and so the county will get paid back for those costs over time through the revenue streams coming into the funding plan. Of course, that won't be paying the county back for the grants that were used to help fund the plan, but this is just for the general fund contribution. And then we had to estimate the annual operating cost in perpetuity post-permit. And next slide, here's a pie chart of the costs. No surprise, land acquisition is a major component, but not the majority of costs. Wetland restoration is a very expensive component of the plan, and then the ongoing management and monitoring is the third largest component of costs. Then we have compliance administration, the endowment, which is this process of building an endowment fund over the course of the permit term, that's a component of cost, we have a contingency factor in there, and then you can see that little sliver for plan preparation. Total cost of the plan over 50 years in today's dollars, $1.2 billion. Okay, next slide, I'm going to now just do a brief overview of the revenue side of the funding plan, this next pie chart. This gives you a sense of the, and Aaron alluded to this in his comments, of what I referred to in the nexus analysis as the mitigation component versus the conservation component of plan. The mitigation component of plan is related to mitigating impacts of covered activities, that's funded by a suite of, mostly development fees and a few other revenue sources that you can see make up 73% of the funding plan, with the land conservation fee being the majority of funding for this plan, that's the fee that applies to all covered activities, and I'll be going into that in a little more detail, all of the special habitat fee that you can see there. On the other side of this pie chart, we have funding for the conservation component of the plan. So about, you know, 27 odd percent of this plan is really associated with conservation of communities over and above the mitigation of covered activities. And we have state and federal funding, funding a large share of that, we have some other conservation funding coming in, and then the other funding is a mishmash of items that will support the conservation side of the plan, a new plan. Okay, I'll go into the development fees now in a little more detail. First, the land conversion fee, the next slide there, yeah, if you could pull up all the bullets here, and I'll just walk through them from the top down. This is, to be in compliance with mitigation fee act, what did we focus on? What are the major issues related to reasonable relationship between covered activities and the payment of fees? That reasonable relationship requirement being the heart and soul of mitigation fee act. First, valley versus foothills. We've got two sub-areas with two different sets of costs and mitigation actions, so we had to take a look at that. Low-density rural residential, that is a very different kind of impact on the landscape than other types of covered activities. And then finally, we wanted to pay attention to fragmentation and subdivision, because that also has a much different kind of impact than other types of covered activities. So going to the next slide, dealing with that first point, you've seen a map like this already, the planned sub-areas, so we have a dividing line here between valley and foothills, and that dividing line will run through the fee program as well. We go to the next slide. So the land conversion fee schedule, how do we look at these nexus factors, or what was the result of our analysis of these factors? First, when it comes to rural residential, and this is on a per-acre basis, if direct impacts are less, obviously, you have much more land that remains untouched, fragmentation impacts are less, there's very little fragmentation under our definition of rural residential. So those tend to have, those are going to have the lowest fees per acre. They may not be the lowest fee per project, because you may have some larger rural residential developments, but it'll be the lowest fee per parcel acre. Small lots, you have much, not much, you have more direct impact, because the whole lot, it typically is affected, but there is no fragmentation, so those fees tend to be in-between. But the highest fees are associated with all other covered activities, where you have, and this would be, you know, say typical subdivision development, where you have the greatest direct impacts and greatest fragmentation effects. And the second part of this slide just, you know, graphically depicts the fact that, you know, the foothill costs are just lower per acre, mitigation costs, valley costs are higher per acre, and so the fees, fee schedule is going to reflect that distinction as well. Okay, go to the next slide, you can see the land conversion fee schedule with, again, those same categories. Rural residential is per dwelling unit and then an additional fee per acre. For small lots, it's a per-acre fee in the valley and a per-d dwelling unit fee, plus a per-acre fee in the foothills. And for all other development, you have the highest fees per acre in the valley, again, per dwelling unit plus per-acre fee in the foothills, except for non-residential in the foothills, which is just a per-acre fee. Of course, feel free to stop if you'd like to squish your time, I'm going to move on to the special habitat fee.
I'll take you up on that stop, if I could, please.
Okay.
These fees here are going to be spread across every lot applied for, or every subdivision applied for, or only those who need to mitigate? How are these fees going to be allocated?
These fees are applied across all covered activities. So if you're in the plan area, you're conducting a covered activity, you'd be paying the land conversion fee.
Even if you have no impact on those items?
Well, there are impacts, we're just not analyzing them at a project and a site-specific level.
So we're asking all development, basically, to mitigate the impacts of all development, as opposed to project by project?
It really comes down to covered activities, and if you have natural or semi-natural conditions on those properties, you have oak woodlands, grasslands in the valley, then you're required to pay fees. You're converting those, you have an effect today, you may have in the valley, Swenson's hawk mitigation requirements that get imposed at a project level, projects come through SEQA. Ultimately...
So I guess without, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I have a piece of property with no oak woodlands, no Swenson's hawks, no blackbirds, no turtle, you know, it's just right there, ready, say and develop me, there's no impacts, no nothing, that ideal piece of property, I'm still going to pay to mitigate these for other developers?
So that's the, the next step is, if you are an urban land cover type, that site has nothing on it, you're surrounded, there's various examples throughout the area where people have received prior entitlements, graded those, done something with them, there's nothing on them, an urban land cover type, not subject to fees. There's a lot of circumstances in there, obviously, and, you know, it depends is not a good answer, but it will depend when your application comes in, what are your, what are the effects we're looking at, what are the covered activities, what's the status of the land today versus others? But if you have an effect, you pay the fees. Everybody pays for the effects.
Okay, but if there are no impacts, then you could possibly be exempt from the fees?
You would not be a covered activity, effectively.
Thank you.
We have a project right now that I'm working with Public Works on, which is a previously developed site, but lo and behold, it has a wetland on it. It would normally not be a covered activity, with the exception of that wetland, and so it actually behooves them to come in and comply with the PCCP, because it's a much more timely, quick, and actually, in that case, less expensive process than they would otherwise receive if they tried to go outside of a covered activity, go to the state and federal agencies, and get their permits for two-tenths of an acre of wetland fill.
Yeah, so go on to the special habitat fee, and if we could go to the Y special habitat fee slide?
We're there.
Okay. So why did we break out this component of plan costs and develop a separate fee? Well, the primary point, really, from the nexus perspective, from our perspective, was the last bullet point about, there are just significantly higher costs per acre to mitigate impacts. So you wouldn't want all development paying for impacts, it's just a subset of development has, when they're significantly higher. These are also, these special habitats typically considered wetland habitats are subject to regulatory oversight, so that it helps to break out the fees to demonstrate implementation at oversight, and of course, these habitats are extremely sensitive, that's why we have these higher costs, they're highly valued by the plan, and so we want to make sure that we have the funding to offset any impacts to them. As far as the nexus for special habitat fees, there's no cost difference between the valley and the foothills, so we have the same fee in both sub-areas. The fee is paid in addition to the land conversion fee, the land conversion fee is paying for preservation components, paying for acquisition of land that would add special habitat, is part of the mitigation activities under the plan. These fees are over and above that, so they can pay for the restoration enhancement and enhancement costs associated with mitigation. And then in the next slide, we have a schedule of special habitat fees. These are much higher per acre, demonstrating a much higher cost per acre. And of course, smaller projects, these special habitats are measured in typically tenths of an acre, so the fee on a smaller project level basis is not anywhere reflective of what you see in the schedule per acre. Larger master plan projects covering tens or hundreds of acres obviously could have acres of impact on special habitats, and would be paying fees based on the same schedule. Okay, I'm going to wrap up, if we can move on to the open space and fire hazard management fee. If we go to the next slide, this is a fee that is only applicable in the foothills area, not the valley. We developed this fee because it, based on the development scenario that is underlying the plan, there's a lot of development likely to occur in the foothills in existing urban areas, and this development would benefit from many aspects of the plan's implementation related to open space acquisition, and particularly fire hazard management. So the foothill open space and fire hazard management fee is a way to connect development in areas outside those covered by the plan in the foothills, connect them to the benefits they'd be receiving under the plan, and pay a relatively small share of overall plan costs, but a share representative of the benefits they receive. And the fee on the next slide, you can see the fee is about $2,200 per dwelling unit and $2,700 per acre for non-residential. And I believe that that is my last slide, happy to take any questions, or I can turn it over.
I have a question. We have one question for you, from Mr. Nader.
I wanted to talk about Section 9.5, where all the costs over the 50-year period are laid out, and I had a question on the startup costs, and I was trying to determine exactly what those startup costs are. I mean, I see, you know, 3.2 million, 411,000, and then 2.8 million. What is the actual startup cost, bottom line?
Greg, I can pull up the detail if you have any...
Yeah, I don't have it here at the podium with me.
Yeah, let me...
Yeah, it's coming out of the cost and funding plan itself.
Yeah, let me pull up the cost and funding plan out of my computer here.
I'm sorry, did Bob answer that question?
He's pulling it up.
Okay, he's pulling it up, all right.
I'm pulling it up now, yeah. It's primarily related to plan administration, and those plan administration costs, I think that would be the startup cost with establishing, you know, an office, getting computers... an office, getting computers, um, such as that, and, um, just about there. Yeah, it looks like, um, uh, it's the, it's the size and benefits for staff associated with getting the DCA, getting the doors open. I would say that's, that's the primary cost that I'm looking at here.
Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out what the number is, Bob. If you could tell me what that number is, and, um, I'm assuming that's to fund the, uh, JPA that's gonna be set up to kind of manage this whole process.
Yeah, I have 2.5 million here for startup costs in the, uh, cost model detail for plan administration, which is the major component of startup costs. Um, the, the 2.5 total startup costs are, um, 3.3.
Yeah, so it's 3.3 is the startup cost.
Yeah.
And now, did I hear you correctly that the initial startup costs, the county is going to take it out of the general fund to, uh, to get this rolling, and then that they will get paid back over a period of time for that?
Actually, the plan preparation reimbursement is associated with the, uh, general fund contributions to the plan to date. These startup costs will be funded by the plan going forward, uh, funded by development fees and the other funding sources noted going forward. So no, these are not reimbursed, these are funded under the funding plan.
So you're saying that immediately there's gonna be all kinds of fee revenue coming right in to do this funding?
Yeah, we already have, um, participation through the in lieu fee, uh, through the Placer Vineyards project.
So there's not gonna be any funds coming out of the general fund?
No, the, the idea is that the cash flow would be managed to, um, so that costs would be kept within the revenue stream available to the DCA from the funding plan.
Okay, all right.
Maybe I'll help with that. In theory, if we don't have fee revenue coming in, there's no effects occurring, keeps our costs low during these economic times, but could be reality. Uh, but as Bob mentioned, we've actually had our first in lieu fee program payment from the Placer Vineyards project come in, half million dollars. So as that comes in, that goes into buckets, bucket for endowment, bucket for land acquisition, small percentage of that does go to plan administration costs. If, if in the off chance we did overstaff early and then have a reduction in fee revenue, we could be talking to the plan permittees about, hey, we've, we need a loan, for instance. We, we need to cover this funding gap to keep moving, but if all goes well, and we start up just in time, just in need, and as fee revenue comes in, because that's really what triggers effects and therefore triggers our actions and staffing and all of that, then that would be covered.
Yeah. Um, I have other questions related to the financial, but I'm gonna wait until later. Um, I'm a retired banker, not a land bank environmental guy, a banker, so numbers are important to me, and I do have some questions related to that, but I think we should get through the presentation, then I'll deal with it, so Bob, don't go away.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna turn it over to Heidi Mikkelsen from ICF, talk about the EIR/ EIS.
Actually, uh, as a commission, it's, uh, 1 o'clock almost, and we're going to take one half hour break, and I think, let's say, 1:30, we will reconvene the meeting and we'll continue on with the EIR presentation at that point in time. So, uh, the commission is taking a break until 1:30 PM. staff, uh, on the environmental documentation.
Okay, all right.
Oh, where's Steve? Oh. Okay, we'll hold on here just a little bit.
And Greg, if you're back there, if you could please advance us to the EIR/ EIS slide or left off, that would be great.
Okay, uh, the decision is you can begin. Uh, we have a majority of the planning commission here.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. I now have Heidi Mikkelsen with ICF. ICF prepared the EIS/ EIR on behalf of the county as the SEQA lead agency and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as the NEPA lead, and so Heidi, you're on.
I think you're muted. You're going to need to unmute your speaker.
Okay, I think we can hear someone. Heidi, are you there?
You may be hearing from me.
Can anyone in the room hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, great, okay.
You're on.
Hi, everyone. We were having some technical difficulties on the Skype ends too, but I, I think we're good. Are you guys ready for me to start?
We're ready for you to begin.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you, everyone. My name is Heidi Mikkelsen. I am a project manager, uh, with ICF, and I just wanted to thank the commission for accommodating my attendance here virtually today. Uh, I'm gonna provide you with a brief overview of the EIS/ EIR that was prepared for the project to comply with SEQA and NEPA. Uh, great, yeah, that's the right slide, okay. Uh, so because this project requires the issuance of both federal and state permits, it is subject to both SEQA and NEPA. Um, SEQA, of course, is the California Environmental Quality Act, and NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act. The document prepared for this project is a joint, uh, environmental impact statement and environmental impact report, or EIS/ EIR, that meets the statutory requirements of both laws. And given the broad nature of the covered activities and the types of permits that would be issued under the PCCP, the preparation of the EIS/ EIR was a collaborative process that involved several local, state, and federal agencies. Uh, ICF prepared the document under the direction of the county, which is the lead agency under SEQA, and, um, under the direction of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which is the lead agency under NEPA. Several other public agencies listed here on this slide acted as cooperating responsible or trustee agencies, and were closely involved in both scoping and reviewing the analysis. Uh, next slide, please. The goals of SEQA and NEPA largely overlap, and I would say the fundamental goals, uh, really are, one, to provide an objective and comprehensive evaluation of a project's potential effects on the physical environment, uh, two, to identify the significant adverse effects of a project and to avoid or mitigate those through mitigation measures or alternatives, uh, three, to disclose the information to the public so that the public can be informed and also participate in the decision-making process, and, uh, last but not least, to disclose the information to the decision-makers so that they can be informed about the environmental effects of a project and weigh those considerations in their decision-making process. Next slide. Well, the EIS/ EIR is a lengthy document, um, which you, anyone who's looked at it knows, so I wanted to take a, a moment to point out just a few, uh, key components to the document to help navigate the reader. Uh, the first is the executive summary, uh, that's at the beginning of the EIS/ EIR, and that provides a summary of the, um, project or proposed action and the alternatives. Uh, it also includes a table summarizing all of the impact conclusions and the mitigation measures for the alternatives that are evaluated. Um, another important point is that the environmental review process for this project began with a detailed screening exercise of 12 different alternatives. Uh, those were eventually narrowed down to the four alternatives that were evaluated in the EIS/ EIR, and that alternative screening analysis is included in appendix E of the EIS/ EIR. And the four alternatives that were chosen for evaluation were the no-action alternative, uh, and this is a scenario in which the PCCP would not be implemented, um, and the covered activities would proceed on their current trajectory without programmatic permit coverage, the proposed action, which is the project that you have before you today, a reduced-take-reduced-fill alternative, which would reduce the conversion of Vernal Pool Complex and other communities associated with wetlands or other waters, and a reduced permit term alternative, which would reduce the permit term from 50 to 30 years. Um, each alternative is evaluated at an equal level of detail in the EIS/ EIR, and for those of you who are more familiar with SEQA, this is one of the, the equal treatment of alternatives is one of the fundamental differences between SEQA and NEPA, and, and that's the reason why this joint document takes that approach. Uh, next slide. So the proposed project or the proposed action under NEPA that is evaluated in this document is defined as the issuance of ITPs by the wildlife agencies together with the subsequent adoption and implementation of the plan by the permit applicants, consistent with the permits and approval and execution of the implement, implementation agreement. Um, and what this means is that the EIS/ EIR evaluates whether issuance of the programmatic permits would change the environmental impacts of the covered activities compared to what they would have otherwise been if the covered activities were to proceed without the programmatic permits, i.e. the no-project alternative. Um, and because the covered activities, and I, I think this is a really important point to understand about the EIS/ EIR analysis, um, the covered activities include growth within, uh, Placer County and the city of Lincoln that has already been evaluated, uh, in their respective general plan EIRs for those jurisdictions. So the conclusions, those documents are incorporated by reference into the EIS/ EIR, and the conclusions of those general plan EIR analyses are carried forth into this EIS/ EIR. Um, and that really is the basis for many of the significant conclusions for this project, um, that were made in the EIS/ EIR that you'll see summarized in the next, uh, slide. Um, and then also the EIS/ EIR, of course, evaluates the actual physical impacts of implementing the conservation measures, which are unique to the PCCP. Uh, and this slide, uh, just quickly lists the environmental effects that were analyzed in the EIS/ EIR. Um, I won't belabor us by going through the full list, but, um, you can go ahead and, and read through the list yourself, but I will say that they generally correspond to appendix G of the SEQA guidelines. Um, and then they also include a couple of topics that are unique to NEPA, um, which are socioeconomic impacts and environmental justice impacts. Uh, next slide. Okay, so this summarizes the impact conclusions of alternative one, which is our no-action alternative. Um, again, this assumes that the covered activities would proceed under existing conditions without, um, programmatic ITP coverage. Um, and as I mentioned, these conclusions really carry forth the conclusions from the Placer County General Plan EIR and the City of Lincoln General Plan EIR with respect to the impacts associated with growth, planned growth in those communities. Um, and as you can see, the, uh, the EIS/ EIR identified, as did the general plan EIRs, uh, several significant and unavoidable impacts for the no-action alternative, including impacts to biological resources. Uh, next slide. And this slide summarizes the impact conclusions for alternatives two, three, and four. Two is the proposed action or the proposed project. Uh, all of the impact conclusions for these alternatives were the same, and you can see that alternatives two, three, and four would have fewer significant and unavoidable impacts than the no-project alternative. Um, in addition, the impacts to biological resources, um, by virtue of the alternatives being covered under the PCCP and subject to the requirements, um, avoidance measures and requirements for covered activities under the PCCP, um, under these alternatives, the impacts to biological resources would be mitigated to a less than significant level. Next slide. The draft EIS/ EIR was published for a 60-day review period from late June until late August. A notice was provided under SEQA through the usual, um, uh, communication measures through the county's website, the state clearinghouse, and the county clerk, and notice was provided under NEPA in the federal register. We received 49 comment letters on the draft EIR/ EIS.
I'm sorry, you're not gonna like this, but there's...
Oh, hey, Paula, can you mute yourself? Sorry.
My apologies.
No worries. Um, 49 comment letters were received on the draft EIS/ EIR, and those included letters from public agencies, uh, landowners, nonprofit organizations, and other stakeholders. The county prepared written responses to all comments received, and those written responses are included in appendix I of the final EIS/ EIR, which was released on May 22nd, 2020. Um, the final EIS/ EIR also includes minor revisions to the text of the draft EIS/ EIR, um, and those revisions included, for the most part, just consistency edits and clarifying text. Uh, the revisions made in the final EIS/ EIR did not alter the analysis or the impact conclusions in the draft EIS/ EIR and do not warrant recirculation under SEQA or NEPA. Uh, next slide. Uh, and I believe this is my last slide. This just summarizes, um, the availability and review of the EIS/ EIR. Uh, there is a link here to the documents online, including the PCCP, um, and the various components of the PCCP, the draft EIS/ EIR, the comments that were received on the draft EIS/ EIR, and the final EIS/ EIR. Uh, we also have a summary of the, of the next steps today, and, um, essentially, following the issuance of your recommendation today, the next steps in the SEQA process will be for the board to consider the final EIS/ EIR, um, and the county's responses to the comments received on the draft EIS/ EIR, to certify the final EIS/ EIR, to adopt the SEQA findings, the statement of overriding considerations, and the mitigation monitoring program, and to approve the project. The county would then file the notice of determination under SEQA, which would begin a 30-day statute of limitation period for any potential SEQA challenges. And the next step in the NEPA process is for U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to adopt the EIS/ EIR and prepare the record of decision, and similar actions under both SEQA and NEPA would be required from the other responsible and trustee agencies that, um, are required to issue any approvals for this project. And I will hand it back over to Greg to end our presentation with an overview of staff's recommendations.
Can I just ask a question related to the EIR? I know the comment period is closed, but we've received a couple of other letters of, uh, some obviously support, so that's not so much of an issue, but there's, uh, a couple of them that were citing particular issues with this, so how are those gonna be addressed?
So I... Do you want me to take that one, Greg?
Actually, I can cover that one.
Okay.
So SEQA doesn't require that we respond to comments in the final EIR, but it's county policy, comments received in writing up to and including the planning commission meeting will receive a response to their comment, so we'll be subsequent to this meeting preparing those and, uh, taking those forward as part of our SEQA findings to the board supervisors, so they will get a response to those written comments.
A question right now, based on your review, are there any new and significant impacts that have not been addressed within the final EIR?
Not from my perspective, from the county's SEQA perspective, Heidi. I don't know if you've been through all the letters, but if you have a...
I think a couple rolled in today that I haven't looked at, but I, all the others I've looked at, I'm in agreement with you, Greg. There's nothing surfacing that was not already addressed in the draft EIS/ EIR or the responses to comments that were in the final.
Thank you.
Nonetheless, they will get a response. Okay, so that brings us to the end of the presentation. Here we are. And so, as the staff recommendation is that you, the planning commission, consider the presentation, the information provided to you in the record, staff report, findings, resolution ordinances that we have attached, receive public testimony, consider that public testimony, and forward a recommendation informed by your deliberations today onto the board as supervisors for the actions we've discussed, resolution certifying the final EIR with the findings of fact, statement of overriding considerations, and the mitigation monitoring reporting program, resolution for the Placer County General Plan amendments with the amendments that were outlined by Lauren Clark. outlined by Lauren Clark. Also, a resolution approving the conservation program consisting of the HCP and CCP, the county aquatic resources program, cultural resources management program, and the in-lu fee program, which is actually already existing, but is being incorporated as part of this action. We also have an ordinance, Chapter 19, Lauren covered, and ordinance, Chapter 17, Lauren covered. We have distributed to you an errata sheet, which is also up on our website now with some changes to Chapter 17, and so those are available for your review. I don't have a copy of that. I'll look to county council in terms of what we should do to... Should I describe those for the record?
Right, so I believe the errata sheet has been provided to each of the commissioners. If it is available on the website, too, that's great, but I think it is probably proper to just read in each of the requested changes, and maybe just a brief background as to the reason for these modifications.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners Lauren Clark. Yeah, we received comments, as Greg has mentioned, on both the environmental document, on the project in general, and even some that were just complimentary and asking to proceed. One of the comments was an evaluation of the various changes to Chapter 17 and 19. After contemplating the comments that we received, we all collectively agreed that some changes were appropriate primarily for clarification. Briefly, I will run through those. The first is a definition of what a land conversion authorization is. That's a new term now in county code. It shows up in both Chapters 19 and 17. We had a long list of entitlements that were described as part of that. We removed that list of entitlements and simply talked about a land conversion authorization is the event at which ground disturbance is allowed. So for example, a tentative map doesn't disturb the ground. The improvement plans and grading plans, and grading permits and building permits disturb the ground. So the land conversion authorization is the triggering event through the county's permit process that results in a ground disturbance that links to when you pay fees. That's the primary purpose for that change. Secondly, as a definition of stream system, we wanted to highlight or expand that definition because it also, not only is mentioned in Chapter 19, but it's also mentioned in Chapter 17, which is zoning ordinance. So it's to clarify that it is accounted for in two places. In terms of the stream system setbacks themselves, which is Section 1754-145 of the zoning ordinance, I'm on page two of the document, we had a series of redundant standards. Number three and four are redundant because of the language contained in number five, which is PCCP-covered activities. We don't need to talk about vegetation removal and effects to aquatic resources if you are complying with PCCP-covered activities, so it was removing that redundancy. Onto Chapter 19, again, the amendment to the land conversion authorization. And then, under applicability, where does the PCCP apply? If you go down to Section 1910, O50A4, there was the use of the term vested, which has a very specific meaning in terms of land use, particularly with, say, vesting tentative maps. So we didn't want to use that term incorrectly. We deleted that, replaced it with approved. And under 4A in that same section, we added a clarification that an amendment before the planning commission on an entitlement in and of itself is not triggering PCCP compliance. It's only if that amendment results in covered activities that increase the amount or severity or impacts to habitat. So if I amend, as was referenced in the comment we received, if I make an amendment before the commission to change a side yard setback, and that doesn't cause a significant effect on habitat, that should not trigger compliance with the PCCP. It's only if that amendment, in fact, becomes a covered activity with those effects. And that's the sum total of the changes.
Thank you. Greg, any more presentation?
I'm going to leave you with a picture, a slide. We have not been resting on our laurels, working on this program over the years. I mentioned one site, the Bradley site, 400 acres. It's a Sheridan, already has vernal pool preservation and species preservation on it. This happens to be the Markham mitigation plan. It was approved by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. EPA, State Water Board earlier this year. It's an in-lu fee program project, so when you look at the mitigation side of the conservation program, we have to restore and create wetlands as replacement for those that are lost. And so this is the before picture, before construction happened, and this is a during picture, unfortunately, taken right before it started raining in the fall. So not green, but you can see the difference between the before and after. Has Markham Ravine flowing across the top, historically meandered into the site, but does include 52.24 acres of restored vernal pool, riverine, riparian habitat credits available for projects as they come forward through the in-the-fee program.
All right. Thank you. Questions of the staff of the commission, or by the commission?
I'd like to wait until after public comment, and then I'll say my things.
All right. Then in that case, it's time for a public comment. Again, please call 530-886-1800 to be placed in the meeting, and we will wait until the
Good afternoon, you're live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is James Hoffler. I'm the president of Friends of Auburn Ravine. And for those that might not know who we are and what we do, we are an all-volunteer nonprofit organization operating in western Placer County and southern Sutter County. We seek to find balanced solutions that are good for the people and the wildlife. We are a farmer-friendly organization, and we operate the salmon cameras in Lincoln that count the salmon that come upstream every year in Auburn Ravine. We also do spawning surveys. We advocate for flood risk reduction and fish passage improvements, both for those cute little salmon and also for the cute ugly lamprey. And we consult with water districts, developers, and state and federal agencies related to the watershed in general, and we're beginning to take more of an interest in Raccoon Creek as well. We're thinking we might be able to figure a way to put salmon cameras there. In regard to the Placer County Conservation Plan, the main thing that we would like to convey is that it's just a good plan overall. You know, it's good for the wildlife, it's good for the people involved, it's good for the developers, and it will actually help property values over the years in the entire western county area. So we wish to really thank the entire team, Greg and Lauren, and the rest of the team members that put this all together over these many years, and we hope the planning commission will approve of the plan as presented. That's all the comments I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions? In that case, Sue, the next comment.
Good afternoon, you're live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. George Cammer. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Colbert. Chairman Haughey, members of the commission, and the committee. Well, I've been involved in this process for many years. This has been a very lengthy process, and of course, a lengthy hearing today in order to cover all of it, but done very well by staff and their consultants, and I want to thank them for doing such a great job and being able to summarize what is really well over 20 years worth of effort coming into this. We represent the Lincoln Village 3 Landowners Association, comprised of the largest land planning entities within the 2,040-acre Village 3 portion of the city of Lincoln's general plan 2050 planning area. Our clients are holding the properties for the future development, and a release of land that's considered within the future growth area has proposed under the general plan for growth. We want to let you know that after investing, what have really been hundreds of hours as an active participant in the PCCP Biological Working Group and the PCCP Finance Committee, that we are, our clients are strongly supportive of the PCCP, and they want you to know that and hear that from the development side, and that we would like to request that the planning commission recommend to the board of supervisors to adopt the PCCP at the earliest opportunity, hopefully within the third quarter of 2020, so that the plan can move forward with implementation and the issuance of the incidental take permits, hopefully before the end of calendar year 2020. And I want to just thank you, Commissioners, in advance, hopefully for your recommendation to approve the PCCP during your meeting today, and would be happy to answer any questions in my gathering of us. Thank you, and that completes my call.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, questions? Nope, no questions, so we'll take the next commenter.
Good afternoon, you're live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Lynette Bat, and I'm the Conservation Director with Placer Land Trust. As many of you in the room know, Placer Land Trust is a local nonprofit, and we're separate from and not affiliated with Placer County. Our mission is to permanently protect natural and agricultural lands in Placer County for both current and future generations. So my main comment today is to express our very strong support of the Placer County Conservation Plan. Of course, the PCCP is a result of a thorough planning process with over a decade of community involvement and input from citizens, developers, business leaders, conservation experts, and various agencies. This diverse input resulted in a comprehensive plan that will benefit our county for decades by balancing growth and conservation. The overall benefit will be a streamlined, more certain, more predictable, and less expensive process for both conservation and development projects, which is a true win-win for our economy and the environment. We look forward to continuing our partnership with Placer County, and also to partnering with the Placer Conservation Authority on PCCP implementation. We're ready to work on joint venture conservation projects with the authority, potentially including holding PCCP conservation easements, allowing placement of easements on land that we own, managing and monitoring protecting lands, helping to apply for grants, and other supporting activities. So in conclusion, we strongly urge the planning commission to recommend the board of supervisors adopt the PCCP, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Hi, this is Jeff Short with the North State Building Industry Association. Wanted to call in to express our association's support for this project, to thank Greg and his team for years of work, not only in putting this together, but in his outreach to not only the building industry, but to the myriad of other organizations and to the groups that he's gone out, and it's been a very transparent process. We are optimistic that this will make development, or at least permitting for development, much easier throughout the county's bedded effects, will be a huge economic boon, all while preserving significant portions of our local natural environment that we all appreciate so much about living in this area. So again, we would hope that you would support the PCCP.
Thank you for your comments. Sue, next comment, or is that it? We're checking right now, it appears to be the last public comment. Okay, that's it. So at this time, I'm closing the public comment period and bringing it back for the commission to have questions of the staff. Wayne, I see you have-
Okay, I guess I'm ready. And Greg and I have already had a pretty extensive conversation, and I've expressed some of my questions and concerns to him earlier, but I am going to repeat some of those because I really want to go on the record about this. I first want to kind of talk about a, kind of a personal connection to this, is that I went through an approval process on a project in Lincoln where we were doing 2,000 residential units. So it was a sizable project, and so I've dealt with a lot of the agencies that were brought up today, and I have to tell you, it was probably one of the most frustrating experiences I've had in my life, in that it was always a moving target, and that there was always conflicting sorts of requirements from the different agencies. One would want this, and the other would want something that caused conflict with the other. And so, you know, I'm surprised I have any hair left, because I would have thought I'd pulled it all out by that time, but I think that just from the concept of trying to bring some sanity to what has been something completely insane in my mind, is advancing this county in an incredibly great direction. So I want to say all of that by saying that I believe that this is a direction that is incredibly positive, and it's, I'm really thankful for the long-term commitment that's been made to make this happen, because it's not an easy one. Again, having dealt with these agencies, they can be extremely challenging, and so I am thankful that you can bring everybody to the table and get everybody to agree. So, but I do have two concerns that, again, I've addressed with Greg, and I brought it up during the draft, is I'm concerned about the smaller projects. And as I went into Section 9, where it talks about the different fees and things that were going to be assessed, I'm really concerned that it's going to cause an undue burden on some of these smaller projects. And I guess what I would caution is that, as we go forward with this project, I want to make sure that we have adaptability in it, that as we see that we may be encumbering some of these smaller projects, I mean, we're talking all the way down to a half acre, so we're going to hit a whole lot of folks in this process. So we need to make sure that we're not encumbering them again so much that we're making it difficult for those individuals. Developers, that's a completely different issue for me, but as it relates to these small projects, I'm really concerned about it. So I would hope that as this advisory group that you have, that they would be sensitive to how this is, how is this actually impacting those people out on the smaller end of the project. The other that I have concern, again, I mentioned that I'm a banker, so numbers mean a lot to me, and so I spent a lot of time in Section 9, and I have a multitude of tabs on the corner of this that I've kind of pulled out. I understand, as I, you know, obviously talking to Greg about this, when you look at these numbers, and we're talking about $1.2 billion out at the end of this, again, I have to keep reminding myself, this is 50 years, so, you know, keep it in perspective. But I am concerned about, you know, I talked, that's why we're talking about the startup costs, in the first five years, we're talking about, you know, some pretty big money, 63, 64 billion dollars, or million, not billion, let's not get there yet, but that's a lot of money. And I guess my concern is, and again, brought this up to Greg, is that on one section in here, it talks about, what are we going to do if the funding isn't there to kind of meet the requirements of the project? Well, one of them is to go back and reassess the fees, which would typically mean we're going to raise these fees. So does it make it, you know, we're already maybe challenging some of the viability of these projects financially, are we going to push them even harder if we have to raise the fees to make the program work? I was also concerned- Um, I was also concerned about the possibility of going to the general fund, you know, just as a stopgap, you know, going there. And I don't think the taxpayers should be burdened with this. Uh, this thing needs to stand on its own, it needs to work, um, the way that it's being presented to us. So, um, I, I'm hoping that there can be, uh, a lot of care given to how this is going to operate. I know Greg's assured me a couple of things, that they can make the adjustments that they need to make as they go through this, uh, as far as monitoring the costs to, um, not cause undue burden where fees have to necessarily be increased. Um, and so he's also assured me that, uh, the cost to the smaller projects will be, uh, neutral in that it would be, if they went through the normal processes it is today, they're going to end up with a cost that, uh, is pretty close to what it would be if it went through the, this PCCP. So, uh, if that's, uh, if that true, is true, then great, I'm glad to hear that and I, I want to see it, but, uh, I, I just want to make sure that we are not shutting down some of these smaller, more, you know, family-oriented things. I think I used an example on the draft of, uh, a family that has a 40-acre parcel, uh, limited at maybe environmental impacts on it, and, uh, they want to split it four ways for various family members, and, uh, I wouldn't want to see them get hammered with, uh, with fees, just because we need fees to support the program. I mean, it, it needs to be justifiable, not just because we need the dollar. So, okay, I think I'm done for now, so. Go ahead, Jeff.
Without the Chairman's permission here.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Just a comment, I guess more than a question here.
One thing first, um, due to some technology, uh, we have a caller that wants to make a public comment, so make your comment and then what we'll do is, uh, open the public comment period and then close the public comment period, but Jeff, why don't you complete your thoughts?
Fine, just real quick, as Commissioners, we're sitting in these meetings and, and one week we're hammered hard on affordable housing and, and that it's got to happen, it's got to happen, we're not meeting our quotas and all that, and then the next week we're approving additional fees on, on everything, and I just, it, it's a hard pill to swallow, not because of the quality of the pill or the, or its value, but just because it's, it's, it's one more pill and a large fistful already. And I think we have to be, as a, as a county, extremely mindful of the, the cumulative total of what we're getting into, um, because affordable housing is, I mean, we're creating a, a market where more is going to be required because the cost of a standard house is going to be too expensive, so I think we just have to keep an eye on that.
All right, at this point in time, let's pause in the, uh, Commission deliberation and Sue, would you bring on the, uh, person making the public comment? And I'm opening the period of public comment, uh, again, or reopening the period of public comment.
Mike Garabedian.
You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, for reopening public comment period, there was just, uh, six or seven minutes there, uh, was surprised it was over so soon. Um, the, uh, the comments today, the presentation was extremely valuable, I think anybody trying to understand this project and what's going on with it. Uh, we've heard from the sales force, basically, for this thing, and now the public, the wide public needs to be informed about it through workshops and other mechanisms. So, uh, it should be a process of allowing the public to speak and make more comments as well as continuation of your hearing today to allow for more comments to you. Uh, to be speed reading, a 2,000 pages of not well-organized and not paginated material is a difficult, so I would say the public comment period needs to be two months, additional months. Now, I will comment specifically about Placer Parkway being in this project. It really doesn't belong here, it is a question of, um, let me turn this other- It's a question of air pollution, it's a question of, uh, vehicle miles traveled and increased congestion, and not to mention bringing cross-continental semi-truck traffic through up 65 and across Placer Parkway, um, which is part of the reason I think that this Placer Gold Truck Facility is now proposed, uh, at Sunset Avenue on 65. So this, this Parkway really, you know, this approval is trading off air pollution and a tr- a transportation potential in future for other values, and it shouldn't happen. The, the Placer Parkway in this project is really a poison pill, it doesn't belong there, the pla- the Parkway, the PCCP, which should really not go forward with that in it, and that, that, that is one of many problems with it. So, would hope that you do not close this conversation today and not vow to COVID where nobody can come to the meetings and stand up and say their piece and can only deal with it electronically. This is too big a project that affects so much of the county now and in the future that it can't be based on 10 minutes of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other calls? All right, no other calls? So I again close the public comment period and we're bringing it back to the Commission. First I'd ask Greg, is there any response to that last public comment?
Well, for the purposes of the PCP, the Planning Commission is, is not the end of the road, obviously. Uh, we have steps now, if we move forward with recommendation from the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors is likely to be out a month from this hearing, um, and so there's opportunity for comment right up to and including the Board of Supervisors' hearing, um, and so, yes, there, there's more to come. Also, there are other permittees under this program, so City of Lincoln, PCWA, Sparta all have to take action on this, even after, if the county were to come to a conclusionary point with the program and adopt it and, and move forward, those permittees also must move forward, so there's, there's more actions to come from a public comment perspective.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to the Commission. Wayne, did you have additional?
Yeah, I'm, uh, Greg, I do have a question for you, and I know you're still working on a response to this, but the Shepherd-Mullen, uh, letter that we just got, I just had a specific question to you because it, it deals with these environmental banks, uh, and they brought up San, uh, San Antonio, uh, property or that bank, and is it excluded? Uh, because I was getting the impression that it was excluded from this in some way.
Yeah, so we've been working, um, that bank is approved by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as a mitigation bank-
Right.
-and other agencies, and so, you know, our goal is to utilize those to the extent we can. The Shepherd-Mullen comment basically pointed out the fact that the County Quark Resources Program, the draft permits from the Army Corps of Engineers have some nuances in there which don't completely allow an applicant who might come through this process to go directly to buy credits from that bank, especially at a, uh, at the smaller level that Lauren, uh, covered, the programmatic general permit, so cumulatively less than three acres of effect. An applicant couldn't just bypass pay, paying fees by the Corps' requirements and go straight to that bank to purchase credits. Why is that? Because that programmatic general permit is for small threshold effects, has less review in it, basically the Corps of Engineers is relying upon us to implement that programmatic permit, and we have to report on them as, as they come forward, how much effects, how much mitigation, where's that mitigation occurring at? But the Corps doesn't want that extra step to have to say, yes, under a programmatic permit, you can utilize the Antonio Mountain Ranch mitigation bank. If that applicant still wanted to utilize that bank, they would just have to go through a different process is really the answer to that question, so they could utilize it by going through the LOB process, letter of permission. Um, so it is our intent to, to work with the banks, they have existing credits, and, you know, that's basically what our response will look like to them, obviously. Haven't come to a conclusion on that because we just received it last night.
Yeah, I, because I was wondering, on Antonio Mountain, I'm, I'm really familiar with that property because the development I talked, referenced earlier that we were working on was right up against this property. So I, I know it's, it's rich in all kinds of environmental, uh, sort of things that can, should be protected and can be used through the bank process, so is, is it really, is it a county issue or is it a core issue that would prevent it from being used, you know, for that application?
Yeah, it, it's really a Corps of Engineers determination, it's their decision. Um, here's another nuance to this, is that the Placer Conservation Authority, even though we're extending permit coverage through the city and the county, the Placer Conservation Authority, when they receive those fees, could actually go buy those same credits from that bank. So there's a workaround, it's not a straightforward, but, there, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. One thing I, I just wanted to mention when we got the Shepherd-Mullen letter last night. Steve, this should be an example to persons wanting to write comments to the Planning Commission, that this letter had no judgmental language, it didn't have any filler language, it concisely said what was, uh, the status, it's concisely said what was requested, and precisely stated, we would like you to take the following action. And it came in late, but that letter was easy to read, I absolutely understand what they wanted, so, uh, for anyone making public comments in the future, uh, either verbally or in writing, this is the best example I've seen of a comment letter, so just wanted to say that. Thank you. Richard, do you have comments?
No, I'm-
All right.
Good. I think, you know, 20 years' worth, and it's, it's obvious from the public comment that there's been just a heck of a lot of participation, and so, uh, I'm good with it.
All right. Uh, Mr. Collins or Mr. Severson?
Uh, no, I don't have any more comments, I've enjoyed the, the commentary, I followed the Ag thing for a long time now, and I think they basically pretty much broke their pick to do a good job, and I think, uh, nothing else, we need to get it started and, and maybe work with it and fine-tune it as time goes, where we find things that can be improved. But I think, you know, to do something like this major this fast has been, uh, a, a real work of art, and I congratulate them.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon.
I'm here. I'm here and I'm listening, I don't have anything to add, I've just been very eagerly listening to a, a very comprehensive presentation with a lot of good questions from my fellow Commissioner colleagues, so I'll pass.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Hursog? So Mr. Hursog is now taking over the Planning Director's position.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, I, I just want to thank, uh, the planning of this, I'm, I'm just a, a fan of the efficiency in, in the way that this plan was developed and how it's going to help, I think, reduce costs for a lot of, a lot of folks in the planning side, and I also appreciate the science behind it. Um, I understand the ecology and the intentionality of having larger communities where organisms can interact, uh, and be able to, uh, have abiotic, abiotic factors where you can have food, food webs interacting with one another that makes for a more natural environment, um, and so I really appreciate that. I think a couple of things I'd like to mention on the record is that, and I mentioned this before, uh, in previous sessions and, and with Greg and, and time together, um, is the partnerships. You know, I'm, I'm, if, if Roseville and Rockland and other communities were involved, I'd be happier with this plan, uh, and it's unfortunate that some communities have remained excluded. I hope that as we go forward, we can have an opportunity, uh, for people to join and have ways for them to participate, perhaps through banks or buying credits or being able to participate in some way, which you've thought about, I know you've thought about that. Um, so hopefully in the future, in the 50 years, we see more communities buying into this and becoming a whole Placer County plan. Uh, that's, that's hope that I have. And then I know that the big work, or the large portion of the work, is going to be land acquisition, and that, I think that's going to be harder than we think, and so that, that, the detail of that, I think I look forward to seeing how that's done, we've got a lot of land acquisition that needs to happen here, uh, there's probably a lot of complicated factors that go along with that. Uh, interested to, to, as we go throughout the years, I appreciate the request for a report, um, I'd love to hear updates on land acquisition and if it's going the way that we thought it was, because if, in 50 years, we haven't made progress on that front, then the plan is, is, is going to have some major problems. And so that, that's the comment that I wanted to make. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you so much. Well, we just found out there have been some additional issues with our phone system and people getting through, so as the Chair, I think it's best to take all possible comments, and so at this time, I'm going to open up the public comment period once again, uh, remind people the number to call is 530-886-1800, and we will listen to the comments and then, uh, bring it back to the Commission after we complete listening to comments. So I apologize to all those who have been trying to get through and have not been able to, uh, we'll take your calls now.
Good afternoon, please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hello, this is Suzanne Jones, I'm your new supervisor-elect, and I'm calling on behalf of my constituents because they're texting me like crazy, people are having trouble getting in, uh, through your co- your comment line, getting busy signals, I don't understand it myself, but I did want to let you know that this morning, I even had trouble getting on to your, uh, to watch, to view the, the, uh, meeting. Your website listed in the agenda does not take us to your meeting, and I also am curious why you guys don't do a Zoom type offering so that people can, if, if people can Zoom, they'll be there through your entire meeting, and then you can go ahead and, you can mute everybody, but I'm muted and want to let them speak, and make the process more accessible to the public. My only concern is that there are a lot of people that are either not able to get here or watch it or be in a Zoom fashion and really have an exchange of ideas. I know COVID's making things very, very difficult for everyone, but I'm just very sensitive to the constituents being allowed an opportunity to express themselves. That's the end of my comments.
All right, thank you very much. Are there other calls waiting? There are, okay?
Good afternoon, please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Cheryl Alkema. I first want to say, um, I think the PCCP is a great mechanism to preserve and allow for development in Placer County. I, I do see some challenges, my, um, my first concern is that if you don't live in the PCCP-covered area, I think you are at risk. I think that evidence of that is the current in-lug system is very- in-loo system is very outdated. Many counties have in-loo fees for protected trees that are many, many times beyond what Placer County has. We've had developers that take out like a thousand trees for one developer. And so I think with the next shiny new program with the PCCP coming in, that the rest of us, as in District Four, are going to get left in the dust. And I think that we should rather than include additional scope for the PCCP, that we should fix the current problems that we have across the board. I also agree with the previous caller about Placer Parkway. It seems rather convenient that we put a transportation agency project as part of the PCCP. And it's also tied to Sunset. My concern with Sunset is the very first thing we do before we implement the PCCP is wipe out thousands of acres of fertile pools. Doesn't quite jive with conservation. And the committee that is recommended, I think it's a great idea. My concern is that those 12 members of the public truly be environmental specialist groups, people that have experience in the area and not developers that are appointed by supervisors to, um, meet certain, to make sure that projects get approved, basically. So I applaud all the good work that has gone on, but I have concerns also about the funding that was mentioned. On those slides, nowhere did I see that general fund all of a sudden could be. So things seem, seem rather volatile and seem like they could just change by a resolution of the board that we're going to now take funds from the general fund. And I think that's dangerous. I think that the mitigation monitoring is a problem because it's a problem today. So we can't even look at the in-loo fees. We've asked for numbers over and over again. How much are developers paying in for protected trees? We don't get an answer. How much open space is there? There's no communication for that today. And now we're entering a very, very complex model, tiered systems with multiple agencies, yet we can't seem to manage the scope that we have today. So I hope that will be considered in your decision. And I thought that was a great remark from the commissioner, that that is a concern, that taxpayers are going to have to foot this bill.
Your, your three minutes is up. Could you complete your comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sue, are there other calls?
Not at this time, but I think we might wait.
Okay. In the meantime, Greg, you could answer those questions to see if there's any additional calls. So I'll leave the public comment period open.
Yeah, and we actually may have on the Skype link, we have the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and then the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So Eric Tattersall. Eric, if, if you're still there and would like to provide comment, now would be the time.
Great. Can you hear me, Greg?
Yep.
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Eric Tattersall. I'm the Assistant Field Supervisor in the Sacramento Fish and Wildlife Office for the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. Personally, I've been involved with the PCCP for more than 15 years. I work on many of these large regional scale conservation plans. And the way the PCCP has coordinated multiple state and federal regulatory agencies and, and their permitting processes has been truly a significant effort. As Greg, Aaron and Lauren had mentioned, for the PCCP, the development of a single conservation strategy intended to satisfy the regulatory and conservation needs of all these state and federal agencies was quite an undertaking, truly a significant accomplishment. I remember a meeting many years ago with various members of the public asking for such a thing, to coordinate the efforts between all these state and federal regulatory agencies. And Placer is, is the first to have really done it to this level. And so it's, it's something that's a truly a significant accomplishment. So the coordinated effort found in regional scale conservation planning, like the PCCP, in my opinion, are designed to provide for the best conservation outcomes. And to a large degree, this is due to the partnerships that are developed with the local entities. I think the PCCP is an example of a successful collaboration among federal, state, and local governments to balance development and conservation needs during the next 50 years. And now at this point, each affected agency, whether it's local government or state or federal regulatory agency, has its own process on how to proceed. For the service, for the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, we're working on our own decision documents and we'll be submitting those internally to our management for a permit decision. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there additional comments, Sue? Okay. So if there's no additional comments from the public, we will now again close the public comment period. We're back at the commission. And one last thing, I think all the other commissioners spoke, but again, thank you for putting this program together. Thank you for finally making this happen. I've been in this business for years. I've been waiting 30, 40 years to see this kind of a program happen. And I'm glad to see Placer County has done that. So, good job. The other, the other note, and I think I mentioned it before, is as this program is implemented, I would really like the commission to be kept informed and less be flexible in addressing problems as they arise, because this is a brand new program. And I think we all are going to be trying to make this work. So I think the commission, from what I've heard, is, is ready to support that flexibility in, in implementing the program. Thank you.
So you have to go through each one of these individually, unfortunately.
Sorry.
Okay, I would move that, uh, let's see, we would, uh...
Make a recommendation?
Yeah, I would, yes, that would be a recommendation. I'm just trying to look at the first wording on number one there. Okay, make a recommendation to the board for resolution, uh, the resolution certifying the final EIR and adopting the findings of fact statement of overriding considerations and mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Nader and a second from Mr. Hursog. So, uh, vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hursog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we make a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors, a resolution amending the Placer County General Plan as follows. Okay, amend the goals and policies of Section 1, land use for the open space habitat and wildlife resources, and amend the goals and policies of Section 6, natural resources for wetland and riparian areas, fish and wildlife habitat, vegetation, and open space for the preservation of natural resources.
I'll second that.
First and second. The roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Hursog. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hursog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we make a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors, a resolution approving the Placer County Conservation Program consisting of Habitat Conservation Plan, Natural Community Conservation Plan, and amending agreement of HCP and CCP, Western Placer County Aquatic Resources Program, CARF, Cultural Resources Plan, Management Plan, Western Placer County In-Loo Fee Program, existing, is that amended?
Second.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Hursog. So a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hursog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further move that we make a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors and ordinance adding, um, Chapter 19 to Placer County Code to implement the PCCP.
Second.
As amended today?
As amended, yes. Thank you. Is that...
Second.
Yeah, you got it.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Hursog. A vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hursog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would finally move that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors and ordinance of amending Placer County Code, Chapter 17, and zoning to implement the PCCP plus the amendment.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Another first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Hursog. So a vote for Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hursog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being here and, and providing the information today.